Good morning, please.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. And we'll start with our land acknowledgement. As we gather this morning, I would like to acknowledge on behalf of council and our community that we are meeting on the traditional territory of the First Nations. We would like to thank the Ogonkun people and express our respect and support for their rich history. We are extremely grateful for their many and continued displays of friendship. We also thank all the generations of people who have taken care of this land for thousands of years. Please stand for a moment of silent reflection and our national anthem. Mr. Kelly, could you conduct a roll call, please?
Thank you. Counselor Bennett?
Here.
Counselor Bros?
Present.
Counselor Doncaster?
Here.
Counselor Donahue?
Here.
Warren Nemo?
Present.
Counselor Jardini?
Present.
Counselor Grills?
Present.
Counselor Yon? Counselor Lynch?
Here.
Counselor McKenzie?
Present.
Counselor Mayville?
Present.
Counselor Murphy?
Here.
Counselor Nicholson?
Here.
Counselor Service?
Here.
Counselor Watt?
Here.
Counselor Weir?
Here.
Counselor Wilmer?
Present.
Thank you. Warden, you do have quorum.
Thank you. Are there any disclosure of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none, I would look for a motion to adopt the minutes of October. And I'd like to, before I start my address, acknowledge a very special day today. It's Counselor Anne Jardini's birthday today, so happy birthday. Members of county council, during the month of October, I attended 12 meetings on county business. I presented the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus Regional Housing Plan at the Roma Board meeting held on Friday, November 10. On Thursday, November 23, I attended meetings with several key members of the Ontario Legislature at Queen's Park to discuss the strategic priorities of the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus and brought greetings from Renford County. This past Monday, I attended the 2023 Housing Forum in Toronto, which was convened by Minister Calandra, where we discussed the following: housing enabling infrastructure such as water and wastewater capacity; further to our conversation at development of property with respect to communal systems; activating the missing middle. The missing middle refers to all housing types that fall between the detached homes, houses, and mid-to-high-rise buildings, and to provide diverse housing options, Ontario will need to build more missing middle homes. We, the inclusive housing is part of an effective housing supply action plan. The province will need to ensure it is building housing and homes that is both affordable and meets the needs of all Ontarians. And fresh approaches are needed to tackle Ontario's housing crisis, including modular and innovative homes that can be part of the solution. On this point, prequalification of suppliers and the procurement process would be streamlined. I should add that we were, Renford County was noted by Minister Calander in his, in his opening remarks. I was sitting at the, at the front of the room, and I thought I shut my phone off and it rang halfway through his address, so he told me that, he said the county of Renford isn't going to receive any additional funding. But I got the phone off on time, so he'd reconsider. So we, we were noted, we were the only ones that were noted in his, in his address, so I guess notice is a good thing. So we continue to meet weekly on the issue of the warming centre in Pembroke, and movement has been made to use the site of the Pembroke Farmers Market, and the infrastructure is due to be ready over the next week. And like to make note of the town of Petawawa, and a thank you to Mayor Service and his council, they have contributed $20,000 to the warming centre initiative, so thank you very much, Mayor Service. As announced at the Community Services Committee, I would like to congratulate the Director of Community Services Laura Lepine on receiving the 2023 Ontario Municipal Services, Social Services Association Patty Moore Human Services Integration Award. This award recognizes an OMSSA member who has displayed extraordinary leadership and has made an exceptional contribution to human services. Laura will be receiving the award at a special recognition event tomorrow evening, so Laura, thank you very much. And congratulations be, on behalf of council and our very grateful community. On behalf of council, I wish to express our sincere condolences to both the Briscoe family and the township of Adamson Bromley Work Family on the passing of Beverly Briscoe, who passed away on November 9, 2023. Bev was the Clerk Treasurer at Adamson Bromley Township for 37 years. On behalf of council, I wish to express our sincere condolences to the Pekoski family and the community of the township of Kildu, Hagerty, and Richards on the passing of former councillor Stanley Pekoski. Stanley was a huge supporter of local events and relished his role as a municipal councillor. Recently, the Ogonkuns of Pukwaknagan declared a state of emergency due to the opioid crisis. The county of Renfrew shares their concerns and are committed to addressing that society is facing a serious public health, social, and safety issue due to the opioid crisis. I will remind, I will remind council and our community that on December 6, 2023, at 12 noon, Eva, Renford County, will be holding a vigil at the Women's Monument at Two Hairy Street in Petawawa. This vigil will honor the 14 women who were killed in Montreal, honor the women killed in Renford County, and will remember the missing and murdered Indigenous women. Everyone is invited to attend this event. Earlier this year, the county of Renfrew, along with many local municipalities, have declared intimate partner violence an epidemic. This vigil commemorates those who have lost, who, sorry, I'm sorry, who we have lost to intimate partner va, violence, and reminds us that the work to end intimate partner violence is still ongoing. Eva, Renford County, is also one of this year's recipients of the United Way Community Builder Award of the Year for their work that has had a unique and lasting impact to our community that exemplifies compassion for others and that builds stronger, healthier communities for everyone. Today, council and staff are wearing white ribbons, which signify the White Ribbon Pledge, which is an international campaign aimed at raising awareness about and ending violence against women. By wearing a white ribbon, when individuals pledge to never commit, condone, or remain silent about violence against women, the campaign encourages people to take an active role in promoting gender equality, raising awareness, and taking action to prevent violence. Thank you for wearing the white ribbons. I will remind those assembled here of the following: the county of Renfrew, experience our history, share our future. This concludes my address for this session of county council. At this time, we'll turn to delegations, and Mr. Davis, please.
Thank you, Warden, and good morning, everyone and visitors and our viewing public. I'm happy to announce the, the Wardens Community Service Awards this morning, and I can't believe, Warden, that it's been a year since their last time. It seems like yesterday that we, we had a couple of people up here, so this year's Wardens Awards, just a little, a brief background on the awards. So the Wardens Community Service Awards are a meaningful way to honor and thank individuals, not-for-profit organizations, and for-profit businesses in Renford County for their community involvement and commitment. Individuals in our community step up in many ways to improve and strengthen the quality of life we enjoy here in Renford County and Ottawa Valley, from participating in and organizing community events, devoting their time and energy to politics, supporting social support organizations, coaching, managing sports clubs and teams, and celebrating our culture and heritage. Not-for-profit organizations in Renford County contribute to and assist community members facing a wide range of challenges, and often these organizations offer services and support to those most in need. For-profit businesses are significant contributors to community well-being. Many for-profit businesses sponsor sports teams and youth groups, support charity events, and contribute to the local arts and culture within Renford County. This year's nominations were reviewed by a committee comprised of the Warden Peter Emo, Counselor James Bros, Chair of the Development and Property Committee, CAO Chief Administrative Officer Craig Kelly, and myself as Director of Development and Property. All nominees were considered based on the criteria as how they contribute to the county of Renfrew's quality of life. We thank those who took the time to submit the nominations, which highlighted individuals and organizations deserving of this award. So this year, through our selection committee, there's two individuals and one not-for-profit organization for these awards. And I'd like to start off, Warden, if I may, with the first individual, Wanda Hiltz. So Wanda was nominated by Kathy Frederick on behalf of the Laurentian Valley 50-plus Fit and Feisty Executive. And a brief background for, for Wanda while she comes up here. Wanda Hiltz has made substantial community contributions in through the Alison Fraser Recreation Centre in the township of Laurentian Valley. For more than 40 years, she was instrumental in the revival of the Laurentian Valley Alison Winterland Carnival and assisted in the creation of the Laurentian Valley Fall Flavors Festival. Her community leadership roles include serving as a community dietitian with the Renford County District Health Board for a decade, and as a food services manager at Fellowes High School, where she developed and implemented a healthy eating program and introduced a fashion show highlighting positive body image, which received provincial awards. Wanda's most recent endeavor is creating the Laurentian Valley 50-plus Fit and Feisty Group. I guess I'm in, I'm part of that group now, Wanda. This, this program offers daily low-cost or free physical activity opportunities for Renford County residents aged 50-plus. In its first year, the group already has 315 members. The latest initiative addresses a gap in the rural areas for organized physical activities for people over 50. The group's aim is to offer physical activity, travel, culture, and entertainment, offer activities to build social connections such as the Coffee Connect and with guest speakers on a wide range of topics. Wanda has been compared to the Energizer Bunny. She always gives her all to any project she's involved in. She also mentors other volunteers, offering encouragement and helping to find their comfort zone to ensure the success of the projects. Wanda, congratulations.
So I wrote something down because I knew when I got up here I would go blank, forget everything. So first of all, I would like to thank Warren Neiman and the County Council for the honor of receiving this award. I'd also like to thank Kathy, Sherry, and all of our executive who played a role in nominating me for this award. We are blessed in Renford County to have so many people who contribute to the amazing quality of life that we enjoy in the valley. I'm honored to be considered a contributor to this valley lifestyle. A volunteer is only as good as the people and the organizations that we work with. I'm accepting this award on behalf of the amazing executive sitting back there that we have of our 50-plus Fit and Feisty Group, also to the township of Laurentian Valley and the recreation groups that we work with. We all work together to enhance the lives of the residents in Renford County. And I'd also like to thank my family, there's a few sitting in the back, and friends who listen to my nonstop chatter about what we're going to do or how we're going to do it, and for also letting me rope them in an awful lot. My family, when my family hears the words, "I have an idea," they know now to run. So again, I would like to thank all of you for the honor of receiving this award, but this award belongs to all of us. Thank you.
And we'll ask Counselor from Laurentian Hills to join us, or sorry, Laurentia Valley to join us. So what a, what an amazing array of accomplishments and your engagement in the community, and you're quite gracious in acknowledging, you know, that you have support, and so we're very proud of you and thank you very much for what you do. It's, we talk about experiences here, and life is a series of experiences, and people stay in communities because they have to have enjoyable and meaningful experiences. So everything you do is a, an experience that brings joy and quality to people's lives. So thank you very much for that, that's very important to us, and you exemplify that, and that's what we're looking for when we, when we hand out awards to you and your group and your community. So thank you very much for that. So while they're receiving their awards and taking this quick photo op, I think we'll take a break after the presentations to have more photo opportunities at the back with the, some of the visitors and guests along with the warden after this, the ceremony. Thank you, Warden. So the next, the next item or next person on the individuals is Mr. Claire Cox. I've had asked Claire to come up for the award if I could. Claire was nominated by Bruce Boucher from the town of Laurentian Hills. So a little bit about Claire. Claire Cox of Laurentian Hills began his illustrious career, or volunteer career, with a local cross-country ski club in 1975, and continued for six years before moving on to the Valley Snow Travelers Snowmobile Club, and then to the North Renfrew Snowmobile Association, which he's been a member for more than three decades. His stellar dedication to snowmobiling is an example for many of the other club members. Over the years, he's held many positions within the club, but most notably the grooming coordinator. Claire expertly scheduled and led a group of 17 volunteer groomers, which possessed a variety of different skill levels through their, through their personal levels. Claire always took time to train these club members, no matter what the weather was like, and Claire not only promotes volunteerism within the group through coordination and training and scheduling, but also by simply providing a stellar example for the rest of the organizations to emulate. Claire is a longtime volunteer who does not seek out recognition, but through his passion for snowmobiling and volunteerism, has wholeheartedly immersed himself in creating and maintaining a provincially recognized trail system, and continues to be an absolute asset to the North Renfrew Snowmobile Association. Claire, if you could.
Thank you. Public speaking isn't really my thing, but I'd like to thank the Renford County and the warden, and Bruce Boucher for nomination, and Andrew Dini from town of Laurentian Hills for setting it all forward. Thank you very much.
One of my earlier incarnations, I guess, was, was grooming a long time ago in the Calabogary with a, a single-track snow machine with a, somebody fashioned a groomer. So I enjoy the technology now when I see it, and, and having served, you know, that briefly, I didn't do it well, so they only asked me several times. But having, having done that, you know, I can appreciate the, the effort it takes to, to organize a crew, but then prior to grooming, there's a lot of trail work ahead of time, and installation of signs, and negotiating agreements, and so thank you very much for all your work. Those of us that used to snowbill, and I know the people that still do, certainly appreciate the trails and the access to our community that it, that it, that it promotes. So thank you very much for your time and effort. It's a lot of lonely nights, probably, in the dark, making sure you don't run into something, so congratulations on your award, and we certainly appreciate what you're doing. So thank you again. And Anne, if you could join us, please? Hi, how are you?
Good.
Good, good. Good to see you, too. And the recipient for the not-for-profit organization is the Whitewater Snowgoers Snowmobile Club. Today, we have Vice President Trevor Stokes and the nominator Derek Chapman, the financial coordinator for the club, if they could come up, please. So a brief background, so the Whitewater Snowgoers Snowmobile Club is an active club in the Ottawa Valley since 1970s, and was incorporated as a not-for-profit organization in July 1990. The club is one of the premier clubs within the Eastern Ontario District Six Snow Country Club. The club activities consist mainly of nearly two, maintaining 250 kilometers of trails across four townships: Whitewater Region, Horton, Adamson Bromley, and McNabb-Rayside. The Whitewater Snowgoers operate two groomers with an average operating time of 770 volunteer hours annually, which assists in the growth of local winter tourism. The club creates social and economic opportunities for the Ottawa Valley residents during these isolated winter months, as we all enjoy. The club is extremely organized and active how they execute, and in 2022, they added a volunteer focused, volunteer to focus on applying for grants, and were successfully securing grants to assist in building a trailside warm-up shack, and additional grants to create a new paved ramp in the town of Renfrew for snowmobilers and groomers to cross O'Brien Road. The club has worked with local westmeath business owners to fund the building, building and with materials for a second warm-up shack in Beachburg. The building was constructed by 20-plus volunteers at a value of $14,000 donated by the local businesses. The past two years, the club's organized charity rides and has donated more than $44,000 back to the community. Congratulations.
Also not a public speaker, but would like to take the opportunity to thank Renford County for the recognition, and as well all the townships that we do work with us to make this possible. Also Derek for the nomination for our club. Again, as was previously said, volunteers make the club, and I want to take the opportunity to thank all of them, so thanks for the recognition.
And apparently, if you're involved in snowmobiling, you get awards at this ceremony, right?
And Neil, if you could join us, please? And Dave? And Michael? Yep. So thank you very much, we really appreciate, not to touch, good. So we really appreciate what your club has done over the years. You've been a very good partner, a great partner for the county with our trail system and, and locally, I know with the, with the local municipalities. and locally, I know with the local municipalities, your work with providing access to their community and working with them, because I know some of your trails run on public lands as well as private. And it's quite a complex organisation when you look at the number of trail permits that you need, and setting up the safety, and then putting the wardens out as well. So we really appreciate that. We don't understand, I don't truly understand and appreciate the amount of work that goes into it, but this is a means of saying thank you for those hours. And also on behalf of the Ontario Winter Games, I know we reached out to you folks, and a number of your volunteers showed up with trucks and trailers and helped us move stuff around for the games, so we certainly appreciate that as well, the readiness to step in for a project that wasn't in your wheelhouse, but we had a unique request and you fulfilled it with us. So thank you very much for that as well.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Join in here, everybody swish together. Neil on the other side, just bounce it off. So we're going to take about a ten-minute break, and we'll get everybody out to the lobby, and we'll take some individual pictures with all of the supporters. We'll be back at approximately 10:45.
Please be seated.
Thank you, everyone, for this morning for organizing the presentations. And a special thank you to Councilor Bros, Chair Bros, for his efforts as well in assisting with judging. We really appreciate that. And with that, Mr. Kelly, please. Next delegation?
Thank you, Warden. It's my pleasure to welcome Sabina Mersman and Scott Coombs to the podium, if you will, to present on behalf of Pembroke Regional Hospital. As you know, our paramedics and ourselves have a great relationship with PRH and partners in health and all things VTAC these days. And we welcome them on a new initiative that they are bringing to us today. Thank you.
Great. Oops. Am I destroying something? No. Thank you so much. Thank you, Warden Eamon. Thank you, councilors, for having us here. It's a real pleasure to be invited to talk to you about the hospital and some of our new initiatives and investments that we are making. So I wanted to take a couple of minutes just to talk about PRH and what we're providing, and then we're going to get right into what our new investment is. So as you know, I can't read that. It's too far away for me to read. Maybe I need bigger, stronger glasses. There we go. Thank you. So as you know, PRH offers a whole variety of services, lots of acute care services, ambulatory care, diagnostics, and some regional programming as well. Our direct catchment area, Pembroke, Pedawar, Cobden, Beachburg, is about 55,000, but we do provide a lot of services to the entirety of Renfrew County as well. And we have several partnerships. So our dialysis program is a partnership with the Renfrew Victoria Hospital. We deliver chemotherapy services with the Regional Cancer Centre in Ottawa, and our cardiac rehab program is a partnership with the Heart Institute, and these are just a couple of those. And we operate about 122 beds. In terms of volume, when we talk about inpatients, those are patients in our medical beds and ICU. We have about 5,500 of those a year. We deliver 30,000 emergency department visits. In addition to that, we have over 30,000 ambulatory care visits. This is everything from diagnostics or treatment, chemotherapy, medical daycare treatments, or visits with specialists. We also have a very large community health program, and our warden is well aware, was a part of that program for many years, ranging the Renfrew County. We deliver about 4,500 surgeries, 800 births, and we have 70,000 diagnostic imaging visits annually, and that includes all the eye tests. So talking a little bit about regional programs or what we do for the county. We actually are very proud. We have just received two more ICU beds a couple of years ago, and we now have a dedicated ICU. That means we actually have a physician, an intensivist, that looks after ICU 24/7. And we are now designated as a Level III ICU. That means we can keep ventilated patients, so therefore the sickest patients in Renfrew County don't necessarily have to go to Ottawa anymore. There's certain specialists we still don't have, so once in a while, people still need to travel down the road, but most patients can be looked after in Pembroke. Our mental health services is an $11 million program, spans the county with about 100 staff, and we look after the very sick, mentally ill patient in the county in five different locations where we have also offices as well. Our rehab program, again, spans the county. Pretty much everyone except umpire comes to Pembroke Regional Hospital for rehab services, and I have some more data on that after. We have an orthopedic program. Many of you likely know this. We can now replace joints and knees and hips, and we also look after hip fractures in our area. We have four orthopedic surgeons who live in the area who provide that service. Our MRI is right now the only one in the county. We also have a nuclear medicine machine that's used for cancer treatments and cardiac services. We are the district stroke center for a large part of the county, where people come from Deep River, Berries Bay, and other areas for their stroke services. That's a great program we have in collaboration with EMS, and lots of work is always happening to make sure we get people there on time as quickly as possible. We have a geriatric day hospital and also cardiac rehab program that are regional services as well. So this is an interesting slide. This is new data, actually. We just received from the Ottawa Valley Ontario Health Team, and it kind of shows where do people get their hospitalized care in Renfrew County. The first graph is on acute care, so about 50% of people in the Ottawa Valley Ontario Health Team, which includes pretty much everything except umpire in Renfrew County, come to the Pembroke Regional Hospital. 12% of patients go to the Renfrew Victoria Hospital, 4% to Deep River, and 4% to Berries Bay. And then the green colors are all the Ottawa area hospitals. So about 30% of our services are still being provided in Ottawa, which is great, because we do need that level of service. We do need tertiary care facilities to help us out when we need highly specialized services. Some of those numbers include CIO and the Heart Institute as well. The next column describes our mental health picture. So about 60% of our hospitalized services for mental health are provided at the Pembroke Regional Hospital, and then 40% are still provided in the Ottawa area hospitals. This is actually something we're actively working on. We would like to be able to provide mental health services to the acutely ill mental health patients as well. And this is just really a lack of psychiatry resources, and we're in large recruitment efforts around this right now. And then the last column is our rehabilitation program. So about 80% of rehab services are provided to residents in the Ottawa Valley Ontario Health Team at Pembroke, and then 20% go to hospitals in Ottawa. And in terms of employment, we are close to 1,000 employees now at the hospital, over 200 physicians that are affiliated with us, about 70 that are actively every day onsite, and then others that have term positions or even some virtual physicians. And then we have a lot of learners, and that ranges from physicians to nurses, but also diagnostic staff, lab staff, a whole variety of learners that participate in the hospital. So I'm going to hand it over to Scott for the next few slides.
Yep. I'll keep these. Thank you very much, Sabina. Hopefully everyone can hear me okay. Hopefully that helps a little bit. Thank you. Thanks. I'm just going to click here. So now we're just going to shift a little bit after the overview that Sabina just gave on hospital operations and take the rest of the presentation to talk about, a little bit about a very big investment, a very big project for the Pembroke Regional Hospital coming up, and that is a new hospital information system. So what is a hospital information system? I've got a bit of a definition on the slide here, but it's a comprehensive integrated information system designed to manage most aspects of a hospital's operation. And I just wanted to, you know, this is a very big change from all clinical processes to how staff interact and collect information, including physicians, nurses, really the whole experience. It's a big change. It's a big change for our staff, and it comes with a big cost as well. So, you know, why a new HIS, our hospital information system now? Well, we're a bit behind. PRH is one of the last hospitals in the province to move to an Ontario-approved EMR, which is electronic medical record vendor. HIS and EMR are different, but they often get used interchangeably. So in Ontario, for any new implementations, the province has mandated that you have to go to one of three vendors. And on a further slide, you know, I think that's a bit of a benefit, one benefit of us being late is that we know where our region and hospitals have gone to. The second point being, you know, currently, we are largely paper-based. Paper-based processes, you know, we believe expose our employees and our patients to several risks. So to us, this is a vital investment that we're looking at. Our current vendor, you know, we do not have a fully functioning HIS right now, but our IT system, you know, the vendor is largely out of the Ontario market now. They were very active, and they are with us now, but that's certainly a risk for us going forward. We believe future improvements and the growth of services in our region really do require a fully functional HIS. For us not to make this investment, we believe, would really be holding us back. And then last but not least, we've been told many times, and we've experienced it, as far as recruiting physicians and professional staff, that not being on a fully functional HIS or EMR is limiting physicians and staff that are working in other hospitals, whether it be the Ottawa area or others. It's seen as a barrier coming here and having to learn a different process or different system. So we believe that, you know, coming in alignment with the rest of the region, especially the Ottawa Hospital, will certainly help in us attracting physicians to the hospital. So the vendor that we're looking to join and the organization is the Ottawa Hospital, and the vendor and system is called Epic. And if you can read it, down the right-hand side, or some of the group is called the Atlas Alliance, and the organizations that have already joined. So when I mentioned before, you know, one benefit, and maybe there's not a lot, of being late is that, you know, when we really are focusing on patient flow, which is really a big benefit of the interconnectedness of being on the same system and having that same patient chart, and Sabina's going to talk to more the benefits of implementing the system. But, you know, our patient flow for, you know, the patients that we serve, the other, if they're not coming to Pembroke Regional Hospital, they're very likely going to a hospital that is already on Epic, if you look at the list there. And I think I've maybe got... And, you know, once joining that group, you know, we will be, you know, having the same standardized processes, and a lot of benefits, again, which Sabina will talk to as the Ottawa Hospital. So we're certainly excited about that. This is just my last one slide before I hand it back to Sabina. It's just, and you probably, I'm not sure how good you can read that, but it's really emphasizing, you know, the faster services, much quicker to do order entries, whether it be physician or clinical in any ways, and much faster access. But I'll hand it to Sabina to speak a little bit more to the benefits.
Great. Thank you, Scott. So just talking a little bit about, yeah, what does this actually mean? It seems such a, you know, theoretical thing, Pembroke Regional Hospital implementing an HIS system or new hospital information system. But likely, many of you have already heard about a feature called MyChart. We hear definitely a lot, probably every day, where patients are calling in to say, "I can get this when I go to Renfrew, to Deep River and Berries Bay. When is Pembroke going to get MyChart?" So MyChart is a patient portal that comes with the Epic system, and it's an incredible way to access health information really quickly, because it's all electronically entered. In fact, what we hear from other hospitals and patients is sometimes they have the report in their MyChart portal before the physician has the report on their desk. So that's quite an incredible system. But even bigger than that is, of course, we need that information for patients, but it also then helps communication with other health providers. So you can take that information as a patient when you go to your primary care provider, or you need a home care services, or you need to go to another specialist. This is actually a portable way to take the information along with you. So it definitely improves communication. It also, what we heard is, so every hospital is struggling with making some errors, and on medication delivery especially. We had a report by the Ottawa Hospital that said their medication errors were reduced by 65% when they implemented Epic in the very first year. So this is tremendous, because everything is electronic. There's nothing more written down. We can make a mistake on, you know, what is that medication that the physician ordered. Everything is now electronic and electronically moved from one provider to the next. And there's lots of other opportunities in appointment reminders and automatic booking processes and such that will help as well. So what's the provider benefit? It basically provides one chart for all physicians that are hospital-based right now. So no matter where the patient is, whether they're at the Ottawa Hospital, whether they're in Renfrew, whether they're in Pembroke, you will see, the provider sees the entire medical history of that patient. And we had a really incredible story that we heard at our board meeting from the physician who leads Epic at the Ottawa Hospital, who said they had a patient who had a liver transplant done in Toronto at another Epic hospital, the St. Mike's, and the information there was absolutely available in the chart. This would not be something that is available right now or has not been the last few years. So huge, huge benefit to providers. On the recruitment side, Scott already mentioned it. I mean, we have now physicians saying, you know, "Get Epic and we'll talk. You know, maybe we'll come and provide services then." You know, they're used to those systems. Most of the physicians also don't want to learn other systems or definitely not work in a paper-based environment. In terms of health outcomes, one thing that we certainly know is that it improves preventative care, any electronic system will, because no longer does the physician have to remember that certain things have not been done, but it'll come automatically up on the screen to say, "Sabina didn't get her cancer screening done last time, so, you know, can we do something about that?" So it really helps many, many, on many, many fronts. Of course, it interfaces with diagnostics, with medication systems, and huge visibility of results and proactive monitoring. Interesting, we were actually at an Epic conference yesterday in the United States. Epic is quite a bit advanced, but they're doing remote monitoring with paramedicine and out in the community through Epic. So, you know, the opportunities are endless when you have many health providers in the same system. In terms of value and efficiency, I don't know whether you have had this experience, but we hear this a lot, that, you know, you have a diagnostic test done somewhere, you go to see a specialist, and the specialist says, "Well, I can't access the test, so we redo it." That's a huge waste of resources, not to mention that it's also sometimes painful for the patient to go through that test again, or has long-term consequences. So there is definitely a huge benefit there in not duplicating diagnostic tests and scannings. Going back from a paper-based system, of course, has also lots of efficiencies and will reduce a lot of waste. So I'm going to hand it over to Scott to talk about the money, because that's his specialty, and...
Get up there. Thank you. Just a couple last slides on the financial impact, and hopefully it's come across, you know, the large impact and benefits that will come with this, with such an implementation, but it does come, you know, at a pretty significant cost. So, you know, currently, our model for what this will cost as far as an initial one-time investment is over $17 million. Lots of different costs involved there, some equipment, some licensing, lots of work on implementing the system, and quite a bit of training and change management. You know, as I think I mentioned before, this is really changing the processes for staff. So it's a big change, and it comes with a requirement for a lot of resources. It will also increase our ongoing operating costs, kind of net of some of the efficiencies that Sabina mentioned before. But because of the benefits in the system, you know, we're anticipating this is not just a one-time hit, but an increase to our operating budget. And then, you know, our current model has us borrowing quite a bit of debt to pay for this. So at the current interest rates that we've assumed, we've just put a number on the slide of over the 15-year amortization, close to $8 million or $7.6 million of financing costs. And this is the last slide, but just quickly on, you know, how, certainly, we're not the only hospital in this situation. We're a bit behind some of the others, but some have been doing these investments, you know, over the last few years and the same timing as us. So how are other hospitals, or how do hospitals pay for this large investment? And it is, even though, you know, we certainly see this as an essential investment, this is not covered with any specific funding. We don't get any funding specifically for these investments, similar to, you know, equipment or renovation investments. There's no specific funding for us. So, you know, often, and we are included, we will be financing this through debt or loans from the bank. Some hospitals, there are some differences depending on circumstance, or different funding for different hospitals. Some hospitals may have reserve resources to assist in paying for some of it. We do not. We are not, unfortunately, lucky to be in that situation. You know, hospital foundations, and we are very much in line with that. Hospital foundations for other regional hospitals like us certainly go to their community looking for support, and we very much plan to do that as well and have the support of our foundation. And then lastly, you know, we do understand that other hospitals have gone to their municipalities and county government in getting some contributions to help pay for this large investment, and our presentation today is part of that outreach. I think that's the end of our presentation.
Yes, we're happy to take any questions if that's...
The member from Laurentian Hills, please.
I'm really glad you're going to Epic, because I know when Deep River Hospital went, it really made my life easier as a patient of the Heart Institute and a regular visitor to Pembroke. So do you have any timeline for this? Like, when do you expect to go live?
Yes, we actually do. And now it's still, our board still needs to give the final approval tonight at the board meeting, so wish us luck. But if that all goes through, then we would be starting the implementation next spring or early summer. Now, it's a 12-month project, so there's a lot of background work, because, as Scott said, it touches every process in the hospital and requires a lot of training. So the goal life would be spring, early summer 2025.
Thank you. Other questions? A member from Bonfire Valley, please.
Thank you, Warden, and thank you for the presentation. When we receive this, I ... When we received this, I, I didn't understand until you said it that this type of investment is not paid for by Health Canada or the provincial government. And I think my question is why? You know, we pay for healthcare through our federal income tax, through our provincial income tax, and now we're putting it on the backs of property taxpayers. And I'm just wondering, what is the reasoning when it is 2023 and having a doctor write down on a chart seems absolutely archaic? And I'm glad you're nodding. This is, this is no comment on, on you. I'm, I'm just wondering why this is essential?
So it's likely a question that I cannot answer with, with great confidence, but I do know, and I want to tell you that our MPP John Jakobuski is extremely supportive of the Pembroke Regional Hospital, actually had a private meeting with the Minister of Health Sylvia Jones in August, pleading, pleading our case. And the response from the Minister of Health was, we have not been paying for HIS systems in the province of Ontario and there's no plan to pay for them going forward. So that road has been fairly quickly closed for us unfortunately. But, you know, I, I do agree and other provinces have made other decisions. But, you know, the fact is our province has made this decision and, and this is why we're doing this work to help out.
Thank you. And the member from Laurentian Valley.
Thank you, Warden. I'm just curious as to implementation, like with the number of people attending to the hospital, how do you start that? Do you start from today, move forward and then add records from the past alphabetically? How do you do that?
Right. So it's a great question. So actually, all the background work, it'll take a year to do all of the background work, but the, the new system will allow us only to import the last three years of records into the new, into the new record. That's the same for every hospital that has joined, including the Ottawa Hospital. So we'll allow three years back of records to be, to be imported. And it's basically a D-Day implementation. So one day we will have a paper-based record and the next day we will all be electronic. So all the training in that year, before that, all the training for physicians, for our staff, for our medical records team, the, moving the, the records into the files and such will happen during that year of, of preparation. But yeah, it's a big bang implementation on Monday.
Thank you. And the member from Abbotson Bromley, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And thank you to Sabina and Scott. Very informative presentation. I think that in keeping with, or echoing perhaps the comments of my colleague from Bonnashur Valley, this is an inflection point. It's a long time coming without getting any of the details. The first toes that went into the water of digitization and transformation in 2009 didn't go well. And I've often thought that the, the images that we saw of toddlers, almost infants, taking like fish to water, to iPads, et cetera, were one day going to look back on us and think that there was something decidedly wrong with us that we kept bungling our way and feeling about in the dark. It is, I think now, when I'm seeing this presentation, on a regional basis, there is an incredible value in being consistent. It is once again putting, I believe, the patient at the center of healthcare, which is certainly the, the theme of this government and, and should have been the driving force throughout. And I think that this is. One of the, one of the biggest challenges in my estimation and one of the advantages, the singular largest advantage that the archaic system had was security of information. When you did have paper documents that were in different, different facilities, in different filing cabinets, it was very difficult for anyone who wanted to get information. It has become very easy, but for incredible cybersecurity, et cetera. But that is the one area that as we consolidate those databases of information, that is the high risk that continues to be there. But of course, this is the way of the future, is what is being demanded of our society. Everybody in this room understands when they go to a website, this website is awful. And I'm not going to do my online shopping here. It is just visceral now that we recognize what this needs to be. And I congratulate and commend you for recognizing and responding to our community's needs. I do hope, you say there are three vendors across the province. I am concerned that we continue to have somewhat of a Tower of Babel. I am desperately hopeful that in these three vendors, there continues to be substantial interoperability between the various systems, or they begin to degrade fairly quickly, the, the value that is available to us. On the second point, which is perhaps the larger one, we are seeing, we are, and also an inflection point on how we are funding healthcare. Once again, councillor Murphy has put her finger right on the subject that the, the system is changing dramatically and it is confronting us. And where this council or any municipal councils are going forward are going to be confronted with that and have to, to come to terms with that and wrestle with that. I know just recently I became aware that the hospitals in Huntsville and I believe Gravenhurst are a joint initiative and there is a hospital within each of those communities and they are undertaking, they are at the early nascent stages of the redevelopment, perhaps reconstruction of both hospitals. The estimated cost right now, and I believe it is, much like everyone in this room, is quite conscious of 10. A double-digit inflation, or levy increase is unacceptable, but 9.9 is okay. So likewise, when I'm seeing the estimated cost of theirs, it is not $1 billion. It is about $5 million less than $1 billion. It is $990 million to redevelop those two hospitals. The local component towards that, I believe, is $200 million. And I believe the town of Huntsville has committed to maybe 20 million of those dollars. And what we are seeing, where I will suggest that this is consistent as opposed to what Mayor Murphy, councillor Murphy has suggested, is this has been the process, the MRI machine that is at the PRH, CAT scan machines, ultrasound. These have been funded by cookie sales, bake sales. And I use that as the extreme example, but there is something broken when we are dependent on these things. We are now engaged in lotteries. The things that one time were the exclusive domain of mafia, we have now embraced in terms of funding, gambling now shows up routinely on my television as I am enjoying my sporting events. It was anathema to society at one time. So we are confronted with these challenges and we are going to have to wrestle with them. The, the, there is a difference in my mind in this that I, I am once again in, in complete agreement with my colleague councillor Murphy in that this is not a diagnostic tool, this is the delivery of overall healthcare in the digital age and it is part of healthcare. And it is beyond my comprehension of why this is not funded through the regular health channels, yet I, I accept at face value absolutely that this is not in that instance. However, in the end, I commend you, PRH, for recognizing the value of this and in fact, embracing the, the regional aspect. Of course, that is consistent with the, the modus operandi of this provincial government now, which is to recognize this interoperability and putting the patient first and the family, the Ontario Health Team approach towards health. So congratulations.
Thank you, councillor Donnie. And if, if you allow me, maybe make a couple of comments. Cybersecurity is, is something that does keep us up at night and it will for the future. I mean, we, we know, I think nationally, internationally, the message is it's not a matter of if, but it's a matter of when. However, because we are actually joining forces with the Ottawa Hospital and 10 other hospitals, our ability now to get the best system in place, to have the best oversight has just, will just, you know, expand tremendously. And there, in, in, in this lies the benefit, that we are actually, we are building a regional digital program. We are not just going out as a single hospital, you know, trying for an RFP to get one of the three vendors to, to respond to, but we are joining forces with others. And I think on your, on your comment on Epic, I mean, we hear from the Ottawa Hospital, they very much believe in Epic as the vendor for the future. And even though the other two vendors are trying to become or develop interoperable systems, we believe that in our health region, in the next five to 10 years, Epic will likely be, will be the AMR of choice. We know a few hospitals that are already in the Champlain Health Region are looking at Epic as well, but the investment is overwhelming. And some hospitals have, you know, just recently made, you know, investments in other vendors to, to upgrade and now are facing another investment. So it, it certainly is a challenge. It's a challenge not only for HIS, for, as you say, renovations, equipment and such. I think why we are coming to you for the health information system, we didn't come before for renovations or equipment is this is a real challenge to fundraise for. This is not an object that, you know, a concept that every person in our community can get their head around, like while, you know, when we went out for MRI, people know what that is and they can stand behind it. But to say, you know, you're going to get this great medical record, that's, that's a much bigger challenge for us in terms of our fundraising efforts. So thank you.
Are there any, any other questions? The member from Whitewater, please.
Thank you. And disclosure, I am on the hospital board, so I have some exposure to this topic beforehand. Can you explain Sabine, any, the interaction or the interoperability of this with other programs the county runs like RCVTAC or, or IFD, IV, IVC, which we got presented last county council meeting by, by Petawawa?
Right. Great question. I think it's a question for the future. So again, Epic, certainly the system itself has a great ability to reach out into the community. The system was developed in the United States, in Wisconsin, I heard in a basement by three people in 1979. It's an employee-owned company, privately owned. They, they have 14,000 employees now. 3,000 of them work on innovation, software innovation on a daily basis. And they have certainly developed interoperability with many, many systems. Primary care, paramedics, long-term care, home and community care. So the ability is there, but it all comes at a cost. So what we heard yesterday at the Epic conference was that, you know, we need to first of all look next to our primary care providers. Can, you know, can we bring Epic to our primary care providers after the hospitals are on board? So building one record for all patients at all levels is certainly the, the way forward, but I think that would be a, a long-term vision. And again, another investment.
Thank you. And supplementary?
Thank you, Warden. And just, sorry, another question and it'll come again tonight. How do we fund? How is the $24 million bill to implement this over 15 years? How is it going to be funded? I'm assuming as an example, the Ministry of Health is, is giving you $0 to do this. The foundation will raise some proportion of funding.
Yes.
The balance, how do, how, how does that get implemented? It's, the community is going to pay for it in some way.
Well, it's going to hit our operational budget and depending on what the ongoing funding will be for the Ministry of Health, we're going to have to look at, you know, how, how, how can we deliver the services and still making that investment going forward? But there's lots of question marks on, we, we don't even know what our budget is this year from the Ministry of Health. So we don't know what the budget is next year or over the next five years. Certainly, we hope that the ministry's intent is to sustain healthcare for people in our area and they have demonstrated that in the past. So it's a hope that they will help us out. But at this point, the bank loan will hit our operations on an annual basis. Is there something else or?
No, that's, that's, that's kind of the short, short answer. I could probably make it a bit longer, but it's, it's, it's really us finding a way in our operations to pay for it. You know, I think part of our work is, is advocating with the ministry and the Ontario Health, which we have, we have been doing. So we'll see how that, how that goes, not just this, but for, for other requirements that we have and we'll continue that work. But that really is the answer, is that we have to find a spot for it. And the, the debt is one thing, but the ongoing financing costs and increase in operational costs are really, are very impactful.
Member from Bonjor Valley and then from Greater Madawaska.
Thank you, Warden. I thought you two were going to flip a coin to see who was going to answer Neil's question.
We always do.
You know him well. No, just my follow-up is that we did hear at a cross-provence check-in at the Roma Board in November about communities paying for necessary items at hospitals. It was never orated as well as you did it to let us know why that is. And of course, we, I completely agree with you Sabine where somebody says we're fundraising for an MRI. Well, yes, we need an MRI in the County of Renfrew. So it's an easy tangible thing to fundraise for. This is more of a, you know, this, this, well, it might help you, it might not, you know, you might never see the difference if you don't use my chart. But I think, Warden, with our cross-provence check-in next week at Roma, I think maybe we should add on to whomever, I, I don't have my Roma notes here, but maybe we should add on to whomever that was, because it could be a lobbying effort at the Roma Conference in January, although we couldn't get a delegation, but perhaps a question for the ministers' forum.
Certainly, thank you. And Madawaska, or Greater Madawaska, please.
Thank you. Through you, Warden. Just wondering, to clarify for me, we have e-Health, correct? The e-Health program, the, the provincial government?
Yes.
How, how can this not tie into the records-keeping of the e-Health? And I'm just, I'm, I'm confused on that part.
So electronic medical records and, and where your information is kept as greatly, I would say there's huge diversity in Ontario. Ontario early on set out, even in primary care, for example, to say, if you are a family health team, you pick one of four vendors. If you're a hospital, you pick one of three vendors. If you're a community service agency, you pick one of those vendors. Long-term care, Mike, I correct me if I'm wrong, but most long-term care homes have decided to go onto one vendor, at least they speak to each other. So this is, the system is designed or is the way it is right now because it's designed, it was designed that way by the province. Other provinces have taken very different directions. I know New Brunswick and Alberta, Quebec just recently said they're buying Epic for every single health provider in the province of Quebec to the tune of $3 billion. But our, you know, our government wanted to have a competitive procurement process, but you know, that's what happens then. So now we are trying to backtrack and say, can we build portals, what they call portal of portals, where you have an overarching portal that feeds all the information in? And the province is still working on that front and that still needs to be done because we have so many levels of healthcare for our patients that we will never be able to bridge with one system. So definitely is a lot of important work going forward, but this investment will not solve all of the issues that are happening right now. This investment will, will solve the issues definitely across hospitals and, and organizations and then as a next step, hopefully between primary care and some community organizations.
Thank you. And the member from Petawawa, please.
Thank you, Chair. Through you. First, I'd just like to thank you Sabina and Scott and your management team and the board for all of your innovation and hard work for providing us with what is a world-class facility tucked up here in the corner of Renfrew County. So without you and all of your efforts, we wouldn't have this fabulous system. And more innovation coming with this HI system that'll provide better care for all of our residents here in Renfrew County. But in, in keeping with the comments that are. But in keeping with the comments that have been made here, $24 million is a big ask, and I think there's a lot of smaller municipalities around this table here who we want to help. But for many of us, even giving $10,000, it takes a long look at our budget to decide to do something like that. So if it was something like a $100,000 piece of equipment, you know, we can wrap our heads around that and get together and fund something like that. But even though it's a $24 million ask, we still do want to help, but we're constrained by our budgetary process. So I've heard the word advocacy and advocate here, and even though the province has said we're not going to fund this, I think we need to continue to advocate for this essential service to be covered by funding from an upper tier and not on the backs of the ratepayers here in our municipalities.
Council Juvay, thank you for your comments, and I couldn't agree more. I think it's a two-sided street. Scott and I and our entire senior leadership team never stops advocating. Our M P P, John Yakabaski, continues to advocate for us. On the financing or on the money front, any assistance to reduce the loan that we need to take out from the bank would be helpful for us. So we're not coming to you to say, well, Scott is probably going to get angry with me in the car on the way home, because he'd love it if, you know, somebody could take the whole bill. But what we are hoping for is any assistance to help a little bit with reducing the impact of our loan would be appreciated, or what it is that we are looking for. And if we somehow could piecemeal it together, if Ontario Health or the ministry would decide to spend a little bit of money, there's some federal funds that are directed towards connectivity as well and digitization. We are working with Ontario Health to say, do we qualify for any of those? So we're working on many, many fronts to try to help us out.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments, concerns? And the member from Abbotson Bromley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One thing that strikes me that I should have said as a final comment, our challenge here in this room is part of your slideshow, in fact, that each of the acute care, the hospital sectors within the County of Renfrew are on Epic. This is the first entreaty that we have had with respect to funding Epic. You may or may not know that we have been approached in other health sectors for provision of fund, in substantial funds being required for initiatives, and that is why I say it is something that we are going to have to wrestle with. It is, I think, not beyond comprehension that once the door is opened, it is flung wide open, it is not going to be open ajar. I would certainly suggest, Mr. Warden, I want to be careful not to be stepping outside of my purview, but I do not believe that there is any constraint on us for being very vocal advocates in terms of what essentially has been the downloading of healthcare costs for quite some time. But they are becoming more acute with each passing year. So in terms of that lobbying effort, we do carry substantial weight when we speak here from this room, and I don't think that that is any issue at all, and I think we can be unconstrained in our advocacy. But just so that, so that I'm clear, and I am agnostic at this point on the approach, but that is the challenge that confronts us, is it is not simply the Pembroke Regional Hospital needs that we must be cognizant of.
Okay, thank you. And seeing that, oh, thank you very much for the presentation, and I think it's very useful for us to know the breadth of services. And on a personal note, someone with atrocious handwriting, I'm sure that the staff at various hospitals will appreciate an electronic record. Thank you very much for this. And again, to echo the comments, thank you for the services you provide. We all know a great many people who utilize Pembroke Regional, whether recovering from a stroke or other services. So thank you for your presentation and the information. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate your time and your questions. Thanks.
And with that, we'll call on Mr. Kelly for a presentation on a new endeavor. It's a report card for the year.
Thank you, Scott, for that, or Sean, I'm so sorry. Thanks, Scott, thanks, Scott and Sabina. Thanks to everybody. My members of council, it's indeed my pleasure to present to you today our annual strategic report card. For those following along and your reporter online, the report begins on page 50 of your council packages. As you no doubt remember, we began this term of council with an exercise to redefine your vision and your mission for the County of Renfrew. The mission, of course, is to deliver high-quality services to the residents of the County of Renfrew in an efficient and cost-effective manner, focused on the following six priorities in 2023 to 2026. Those priorities are outlined in this report card and identified as financial sustainability, workforce development, community wellness and health, shared services and resources, attainable housing and infrastructure, and environmental resiliency. You also reaffirmed your vision for, that the County of Renfrew would be recognized as a model rural community, balancing fiscal responsibility and the delivery of services and infrastructure that meet community needs. And you continue to show how you've earned this reputation by, in short, your advocacy efforts, as we just witnessed, embracing of technology, managing your fiscal position, identifying innovative solutions and approaches, progressing the pillars of economic development, and working effectively with all of your local municipalities on common priorities. Now, during committee week, two weeks ago, those responsible for taking your strategic vision, the S L T and the managers, led a conversation with all of you about the projects that we're able to achieve in 2023. Now, I'll not go into the level of detail, because there are several pages of them, but they are fully listed, starting on page 51 for the following 10 pages. You'll note that this list is fairly exhaustive of our activities to date, but we're likely to have missed an item or two, so please forgive us. Needless to say, I'm very proud of the entire team and the entire workforce on the accomplishments that we've had this year, and in my opinion, we've come through the hardest part of the pandemic, and our resilience shows. The resulting actions show a progressive municipality that is on the right track to navigate difficult financial decisions in the future, while effectively serving the people of the County of Renfrew and the employees of the County of Renfrew. So for today's purpose, I'd like to focus on the conversation of the strategic plan milestones as identified, and again, starting on page 61 in your packages. In the package, we have updated your strategic planning document, goal by goal, with where we're at, and definitely can walk through the slides today for the benefit of those in attendance, online and watching. Whoa, a little too much, and I'm showing my marked-up version, so forgive me. In any case, the financial, goal number one, financial sustainability, you see in your packages that we've met many of these goals or partially met, and those that are for the full term will continue to be ongoing. So of note in 2023 was the meeting we held on November 9th. That was a key milestone. So that meeting has been held and will be, will form part of your budget workshop meetings into January, so happy to have that done. And of course, the ongoing measurement of that will be, will be part of the budget workshops and the conversations we have at committee levels on an annual basis. Goal number two, that's fine, folks, that's fine. Goal number two, workforce development, is clearly laid out. The folks that Mr. Foss, the now-departed Mr. Foss, has led with Mr. Bellmore, as you see, has led us through a very successful start to an internal H R strategy. It has meant new policies, updating policies, and culminating in new initiatives to recruit and retain staff. Part of this, I guess, will culminate in tomorrow's Staff Appreciation Night, actually, for the first time in a large scale, so we're happy to have that ongoing. Today, we are meeting with Agonkin College, actually, as part of an ongoing effort to recruit folks. There's a career fair, so we're happy to do that, and we'll be working more intensely with the college through our partnership with Labor, the Labor Market and Immigration Partnership, who we continue to meet with as late as yesterday. And again, our efforts at Summer Company and Startup Company through Enterprise of Renfrew County continue, and we continue to grow our staff, our staff complement in those departments, and contribute to the overall economic development by encouraging those to start up businesses and continue. And of course, our ongoing lobbying efforts with our key positions at A M O, Roma, F C M, Ontario East, and in the Wardens Caucus, amongst others. Goal number three, if I can go to the next one, there we are, community wellness and healthcare. Ironically, or not so ironic that the P R H is there, but in our efforts as identified in January, was to start about, start talking about integrated housing and multi-government reports. So we are working with Leonard County to do some intergovernmental work there. We are working on pooled resources in terms of housing. We've talked about the seniors' concept, the seniors' village concept in Renfrew. We've talked about Habitat for Humanity in varying communities, so that is an ongoing effort through Mr. Davis's and Ms. Lepine's department. And we continue to work with the V TAC model moving forward. Of course, we note that it's been confirmed and completed that we have received permanent funding from the province, and we're happy that that has continued. Our ongoing partnership with I B C will be important as we try to roster unattached patients as we move forward, so we're happy to be a key leader in that and the O V O H T as we move forward. We have determined that the community needs assessment has been funded, but this will be rolling out in 2024 as we, as we move on to other projects. Goal number four, under shared services and resources, of course, we, you're all have been made aware of a meeting that was held this fall amongst all your municipalities and ourselves on how we can share resources. That's been initiated. We haven't moved the yardstick forward on other initiatives within that group. We will be doing so later this month amongst the C E Os to have a conversation. However, we have M O U s or relationships with many of your municipalities on H R, on public works, on economic development and otherwise, so we're happy to have that ongoing. And we continue to upload or upload and share our policies with your municipalities, and we'll continue to do so as we examine new ways of skinning the proverbial cat into 2024 in terms of sharing those resources and policies to, for the benefit of all. Goal number five, sorry, I'm skipping as well as there, attainable housing and infrastructure, of course, the big-ticket item these days. So we are, again, initiating the conversation on our housing and homelessness strategy. We continue to update that. Staff have brought updated reports to you, but now we're redefining housing goals and housing units. I believe in your packages today is the point in time count, one pager, so you'll get an update on that during committee. We heard a few weeks ago from communal services from Frontenac County, so we're hoping to roll that out in the new year with our friends in planning. And of course, we've heard from Mr. Davis and his plan in 2024 to use underutilized lands and how we're going to market that effectively. So all these things are working into 2024 plans. Meanwhile, we try to keep the bricks and mortar together and find a funding plan moving forward on how we're going to maintain and improve our over 1,000 units of housing we have here. Most importantly, we're going to turn the lights on on our two new units in Pembroke, sometime hopefully in the early Q1 or at least Q2, on Cecil and Leanne Douglas here in Pembroke, our two new units. So our effort's ongoing, and I note the final point here is there are ongoing efforts on behalf of the Wardens Caucus. Of course, we're very fortunate, very fortunate to have the Warden as the Chair, who's leading the seven and seven Eastern, Eastern Ontario Regional Housing Project, so we're happy to be involved in that in a very, a very significant way. And our final goal, environmental resiliency, all these things are to roll out in 2024 with the completion of our Climate Action Plan that is currently underway in earnest. So once that rolls out, we will definitely be rolling on our next steps of initiatives, including some of the things that you've already heard Mr. Perkins talk about, our E Vs, we've talked about efficient use of lighting and building materials, so all these things will be rolling out, but all part of our Climate Action Plan, and we're waiting for that one guiding document to be a template for all as we move forward. So again, council, that's the report card thus far for 2023. We still have three or four weeks left, so I'm sure we'll accomplish one or two more things. But we'd like to bring this to you every week in terms of an update, and you've also noted during your individual committees, we're also bringing business plans forward for 2024. So here's what we've learned, here's what we've completed, and here's what we plan for the following year. So Chair, I'll stop there and open myself up in the S L T for any questions or comments.
Questions, comments, concerns from members of council? Member from Abbotson Bromley, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Through you to Mr. Kelly, want to express my sincere gratitude on these initiatives, both this and the business plans, sitting on Health Committee and Finance and Administration, certainly saw those direct business plans. I note that they are also available, I think, on the portal on the county website as well. But I think that this is a very solid approach, to be able to provide that continuing thread. It has been expressed more than once in this room of, you know, trying to keep in one's head the different threads that are always ongoing, that kind of that tracking list, and I think that this does it in a very concise fashion, an elegant fashion, so much appreciate the initiative unto itself of, this is a new reporting tool that is not here to have been available, and I find it very valuable in a very accessible document, to be continually able to see that we are moving on all of these elements all of the time. So thank you to you and to all that have been involved. I know that this took substantial effort.
Other comments, questions? Okay, thank you. And to echo the member from Abbotson Bromley, thank you very much for this. We met and set, and set goals and objectives for, for the organization and by extension for our community, and Mr. Kelly and his staff took great pains to listen to what we're doing and form the actions list that you've seen, and so that it's a, it's been a very, it's been a very bountiful exercise, because when you look at the number of things that are accomplished and across, and across the spectrum, and I couldn't quite find the proper word, bountiful's probably not the one we're looking for, but I just drew a blank. But it's important to set goals and then see them achieved, and when you look at what we're, you know, we're talking about community health, we're talking about fiscal responsibility, we're talking about the environment, all issues that have been circling us for some time. We're talking about housing as well, which is on the forefront of everybody's mind across the province and probably across Canada at this point. So again, thank you very much for this, and thank you to council for your patience as we, as we worked through in January. Many of you were new to the county, and so there was a crash course on what services we could offer and what, and what goals we hope to attain, and some of them are outside of our, as we've said before, are outside of our lane in some instances, and we're developing new, developing new techniques and processes on new ground as we go. And so thank you for your patience and trust, and again, thank you to staff for this report. And Mr. Kelly, correspondence, please.
It's my pleasure. To note that all correspondence received has been forwarded to the appropriate committee for consideration.
Thank you. And we'll move to reports, and with that, the Chair of Community Services Committee, please.
Thank you, Warden. Excuse me, to the council and the corporation of the County of Renfrew, members of county council, we, your Community Services Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Information, item number one, as we heard from the Warden, Ms. Lepine is the recipient of the Patty Moore Human Services Integration Award, and I know, I speak for all of us to say, very well deserved. I'm very proud to have you on this staff. So it's an annual award to a service, social services leader who has a proven and respected track record of achievement in human services and in the development and or application of the theory and practice of human services integration. Item number two, senior women living together. This is a good news story as well. There is a poster announcing that this program will be launching in Renfrew County in J. There is a poster announcing that this program will be launching in Renfrew County in January 2024. Item number three, QP Canada Union of Public Employees Local 4425 update. The County of Renfrew received formal notice from QP Local 4425 that represents Renfrew County Housing Corporation, unionized staff, expressing their intent to initiate collective bargaining for the existing agreement set to expire on December 31st. Item number four are the expenditures for the 2023 third quarter, July to September. There is a budget summary and information on the four programs. Number five, point in time count survey. Attached is the point in time count, and it's the annual homelessness enumeration survey that helps identify how many people experienced homelessness on a set date. The number per household is increasing. The date was on Friday, October 27th, and appreciation is expressed to the community services, paramedic services, and the Renfrew County District Health Unit. And there is more information on Appendix Three and Appendix Four. Resolutions, number six, supportive resolution from the municipality of Blue Water. Resolution number CS CC 231147, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that county council supports the resolution from the municipality of Blue Water, respecting childcare availability and direct staff to send a letter of support to the Ministry of Children, Community and Social Services, with copies being sent to the Premier, to the Premier of Ontario. And the background is there, attached as Appendix Five. Bylaws, number seven, resolution number CS CC 23-11-49, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that the county council recommend that bylaw number 50-17, authorizing the County of Renfrew to enter into an agreement with licensed home childcare service providers, be amended to enter into an agreement with Candice Gellert, Laurentian Valley. The background is there. All of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and Committee Members, Iman Grills, Mayville Nicholson, in service.
Thank you, Chair. And with that, members of county council, questions, comments, concerns about item number one? And the member from North Agona, Wilberforce.
Thank you, Chair. And just through you, I certainly can't think of a more deserving recipient of this Patty Moore Human Service Integration Award. Having worked closely with Director Lapine and being part of some of the delegations at the provincial conferences, she is very, very well-prepared, very well-respected, and certainly has brought a lot of innovation, not just to Renfrew County, but through, through to the province as well with some of the programs and certainly ideas that have come forth through her work. And certainly appreciate and want to recognize how much I enjoyed my time working with her and will certainly miss her.
Thank you. I just, I had the opportunity, I'd asked Laura to represent us in Ottawa, the United Way event where Eva received her award. So, and called down after, or was speaking with United Way, and they were just speaking about how respected Laura was. And Eva was very complimentary of, of the role that she has played in, in supporting the intimate partner violence initiative, as well as, as getting good information to them about, about the County of Renfrew on our, on our Community Services Division. So they were extremely pleased with, with county council and, and the support, but, but most definitely wanted to highlight the support and leadership that Laura has provided. So I just wanted to pass it on. Thank you very much. And number two, please, and the member from Bonchar Valley.
I just have to commend whoever came up with this idea in Peterborough. It is just brilliant, you know? We had a delegation from the Men's Project talking about, you know, the guys that don't golf and they, you know, they get together and they, they build birdhouses and garden, garden boxes, et cetera. I see this as an almost a, not even an extension, but a better way for seniors, and I'm, I'm almost there, who might not have a partner. And don't laugh at me. I see, I see you. No, I just, I, when, when I read it and I saw the poster, I just thought, what a brilliant idea, especially in these times of, you know, loneliness and, and trying to find a place to live and affordability. Brilliant, absolutely brilliant. I'm looking forward to seeing it roll out.
Thank you. And we'll move to item number three. Item number four. Item number five. Okay, and then we'll move to item number six. The member from Amos and Bromley.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. It has been certainly a principle of mine that when a case is made, whether it is the experience at the lower tier in Amos and Bromley, in this instance, as the upper tier is the County of Renfrew, whether it's being experienced here or not, that if the case is made and it is a, a solid case, that I support that motion, even if it's not in the interest, or even if there's not a, a direct benefit. In this instance, though, I do wonder, and I would, through you to either the Chair or the Director, if they could speak to, is this similar to the experience that we are finding in the County of Renfrew as well? That this is, is confronting us with a substantial challenge.
And Ms. Lapine, please.
Thank you. Excuse me, through you, Warden, to council. It is absolutely our situation. We have licensed childcare facilities right now that are, excuse me, have long wait lists for people to join. They are not operating at full capacity because they don't have staffing. That exists in almost all of our licensed childcare facilities. And that is a, a challenge because the workforce is not there. Many people left during the pandemic, is what I understand, have not returned. The rate of pay is slightly over minimum wage, and the requirements are at least three years post-secondary for a registered early childhood educator position. And it is a requirement in many positions. Not all of our childcare facilities require those designations, but, but they all require some level of that designation. So it is our situation, we have not had a closure of a before and after-school program of a large size because of staffing, but we are certainly not able to bring on as many children as we have licensed spaces for because of the workforce issue. So I think it speaks very much similar to what we're experiencing here in the County of Renfrew. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move to item number five. Okay, thank you. And the report as a whole. Okay, thank you. So just very quickly, just, no, just before we do that. So just very quickly, I was remiss in, in not being a little more, a little more, giving a little more information. So right now, there, as, as you're aware, and, and as our members are, there are 55 households experiencing homelessness right now. 53% of them are chronically homeless, which is defined as being more than six months. 5% are veterans, 38% are indigenous. In current situation, which is important to know, 40% are unsheltered, which talks of rough camping. And I think our, our joining in with the warming center is a means of, of trying to serve that part of the population. 20% are in emergency shelters and hotels, 31% are couch surfing. So that in itself suggests precarious, precarious housing and could be homeless very quickly. 2% are exiled, or sorry, have exited a health facility, which is a hospital, and 7% are undisclosed. So some of the reasons for homelessness are eviction, kicked out of recent housing, relationship breakdowns, and victims of intimate partner violence. And there are some that were undisclosed. And what we're finding is the age has changed. 51% of homelessness, our homeless population is between 30 and 64. And 4% is over 65. Again, nearly 20% wouldn't disclose their age. And the youth, 16 to 29, there's 27%. So very significant numbers for our community, as well as pointing out that all the situations are not the same. Homelessness comes in many, in many forms with different, different age groups and for different circumstances. So I just wanted to, I apologize for deviating a little bit, but I wanted to make sure that we informed the community that we're aware of the, of the extent of homelessness and working with community services and various partners in the community to try and alleviate it. And I see the member from Amos and Bromley.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Like yourself, perhaps I'm overstating, but I was remiss as well. The notes that I had made on this were in fact in the appendix as opposed to the, the report. So I was perhaps slow off the mark. There were a couple of things, and they are echoing your own comments, but I think that they bear echoing as well. On page 74 of the charting, unmistakably, you know, and chronically homeless is the number one component, but that is somewhat indeterminate what is driving that to be chronic. But the next highest was experiencing intimate partner violence. And, you know, we, each of us have the ribbon on today. We are aware of the National Day of Remembrance coming up in December, and that the province of Ontario, inescapably politically motivated, does not recognize it as epidemic. It is epidemic just the same. It is staring us in the face. And that is a pretty significant number to see. 42% are homeless because of intimate partner violence, and stunning, frankly. The other, were the contributing factors, and again, consistent with the conversation we've had in the room, consistent with the, the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan of Upper Ottawa Valley, mental illness, living with mental illness and substance use are substantial drivers, which is not to certainly diminish the other elements. But I expect that those are a recurring thread. 100% of the people that are experiencing homelessness are experiencing one or several of those particular. And it is a scourge, and we understand what's driving it. And now we must make the steps towards remediating and bringing those leading these precarious lives along into the, the society that we have built up, that they are participating fully in that. So thank you for actually returning to that. I was remiss in not making my voice heard on this.
Thank you. And the member from North Agona.
Thank you, Chair. And, and just to add to my colleagues' comments and your own as well, looking at that chart, over 50% of people who are certainly struggling with either homelessness or precariously living, over 50% rely on the Ontario Works and ODSP for their funding. And yet the province gave a slight increase to ODSP recipients, but did not pass on that same increase to Ontario Works, which I think, again, on the county's part, requires advocacy that, that situation be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe when we went in August, that was part of our presentation, as well as childcare and increased housing funding. So yeah, thank you very much for reminding us of that, and that, that will be an ongoing effort. And with that, do we have a mover?
So moved.
Thank you. So you've heard the report and the, the various points that were raised. I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? None? Is carried? Thank you very much. And with your indulgence, we'll take a break for lunch, and we'll come back at 12:45. Thank you.
Six minutes, huh?
And now I'll call on the Chair of Operations, please.
Thank you, Warden. I guess I'll wait on the butter tart for a few minutes. Members of County Council, we here Operations Committee wish to report and recommend as follows. Information items. Item number one, the monthly project status report attached as Appendix 1. Item number two, the capital program variance report attached, Appendix number two. Number three, policy PW-22 naming bridges and culverts policy attached is Appendix number three that recommends a naming and bridges and culverts policy, which we haven't had in the past. Item number four, operations status and winter readiness. And we'll see the public works is all ready to go for the winter. Under resolutions, item number five, Haley Station All Way Stop warrant, County Road 61, Haley Road, and Godfrey Road. Resolution number OPC C-2311128. Moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that County Council direct staff to advise the township of Whitewater Region that the intersection of County Road 61, Haley Road, and Godfrey Road with Haley Road and Fire Hall Lane does not meet the warrants for an all-way stop. And the background is attached. And all the data can be found in Appendix number four. Bylaws. Item number six, policy PW-21 entrance policy and design guidelines, resolution number OPC C-231127. Moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, the County Council adopt a bylaw approving policy PW-21 entrance policy and design guidelines, and further that a bylaw 3298 being a bylaw to regulate the construction or alteration of any entranceway, private road, or access to a county road be rescinded. Just an update to bring it into the current standards. Item number seven, PWO-202310, wheeled excavator and detachment, resolution number OPC C-2311129. Moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, the County Council approve the bid submitted by Tormont Cat, Ottawa, Ontario, for the acquisition of a one-wheeled excavator and required attachments in the amount of $533,424 plus applicable taxes. And further, the County Council adopt a bylaw to authorize the execution of the contract. And you will see the background and the bids that were received, all of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and Committee members Bennett, Emo, Lynch, Mackenzie, Watt, and Wilmer.
Thank you. So with that, County Council, comments, questions, concerns about item number one? Item two? Item three? Item four? Item five? Yes, member from Whitewater, please.
Warden requests a sever.
Okay, thank you. Item number six? And item seven? You've heard the report. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
County Council, you've heard the report, and you've heard the, and you've had the report as well. With that, I'll call the vote, minus item number five. All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you, Council. And we'll move to item five. And I believe the member from Whitewater wants to speak on.
Thank you, Chair. And I'm just gonna, if anybody's interested in the map, it's on page 92 of your package. So first, Warden, if I can just, I want to thank staff and the Operations Committee for taking a look at this request. It's much appreciated. And I don't want to question any of the references or the decisions made, but I just wanted to offer perspective from a community. The intersection is, the county road runs at 90 degrees at that intersection. But the challenge is, is that folks are traveling through that small hamlet with a limited number of houses at a high rate of speed because of the shortcut to access Highway 17. So really, they're using Haley Road at a high rate of speed, Highway 61, and then flipping on to a municipal road. From a community perspective, we looked at a number of different options that we could increase safety and reduce speeding at that intersection. And as you can imagine, when you're talking about hardened shoulders, sidewalks, crosswalks, all of these things are very expensive and would take significant amounts of time to implement. We've tried the traditional OPP radars, our own township radars, to try to influence speed, and they do a good job so long as they're there. So when we looked at it, the solution that we could come up with, the lowest-cost attempt to try to increase the amount of safety at that intersection at this time, was a stop sign. We acknowledge that, I think Highway 61 and staff can probably confirm, but I believe it's nine or 10 years out before we'll see that portion of 61 redone and see something like hardened shoulders that would provide some additional safety. So again, the stop signs would seem to be one solution. I'm not suggesting that Redford County would want to change that policy. It probably has merits in other instances, but in this small community, again, small families and from a safety perspective, stop sign seems like the most economical way of increasing that safety. For that reason, I'm going to be voting against this. But I welcome many comments from staff or other members of County Council.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no further comments. And Mr. Perkins, do you have a comment you'd offer? No, you're fine. Okay, thank you. And member from Amisom Bromley?
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. I am, at all times, driven primarily by data. Within my own community, I not infrequently have residents along a roadway that are requesting reduced speed limits, et cetera. And I very much appreciate that there are those objective tests, processes, warrants, in this instance, that can be the basis. Otherwise, I'm always challenged to understand why one thing would be done in one area and not in another area, et cetera. So we do have that. I am, at the same time, also sympathetic to a concern that is raised in the community of my neighbor in Whitewater Region. And certainly sensitive to that this might be the most economical solution, but it is not the solution. Ultimately, enforcement is the solution. And I think that with growing frequency from across all the municipalities here represented, and probably the city of Pembroke if they were still in the room, we would be hearing about speeding issues, et cetera. And we have often discussed at the Finance Administration Committee, I'm not sure if those come to County Council, of substantially diminished POA offenses. I don't know if they are driven by highway traffic infractions, i.e. if the reduction is primarily driven by a diminishment of highway traffic offenses. So I do question, and I just recently saw this on the local news out of the city of Ottawa, with respect to photo. And I know that, I guess in the 90s, photo radar came and went. And now that there is photo offense, citations are made for signalized intersections. I don't know what has been reestablished as the basis for photographic citations and enforcement. But I wonder if there is anyone in the room that can provide that answer, because there are two elements to this. First off, I think that with respect to reducing the diminishment of the speed, I don't know that those that are given to speeding are necessarily making a mental calculation that I can afford that level of fine, but not this level of fine. And I don't know if actually reducing the speed is going to achieve the desired effect. But ultimately, with respect to a photographic, it is not just that, that it is perhaps introducing a barrier, a constraint, but it is also providing now the funds themselves unto examining further options to address the safety issues that are being brought forward here. So I do, I wonder, is there anyone in the room? And in the absence of anyone in the room, my colleague that actually has their own police force seems, perhaps, Mr. Warden, to have the answer to this query. So I would yield the floor.
Member from Deep River, please.
Thank you, Warden. So currently in Ontario, and there is some lobbying being done to change this, but photo radar is allowed to be used in community safety zones. Community safety zones are only allowed to be put around schools or community centers, so there's challenges there. There is certainly an effort to change that, to allow municipalities to put them anywhere. But currently, they're restricted to community safety zones.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions? A member from Bonshaw Valley?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. If I could just get clarity, you're saying when you put up like your speed, it's dramatically improved? Because we have the same issue every tributary going into the village of Eganville. You know, you're on an 80, you're probably doing 100. They get to that 50, they're still doing at least 80. So I am very sympathetic, but ours all have stop signs when you get to the village. But I am sympathetic to the people that live in that area. Would the OPP, if you put up a speed spy that people couldn't see what speed they're doing and weren't trying to get their best score, would there be an effort on the OPP to do more enforcement in that little hamlet?
Whitewater, please.
Thank you, Warden. Just in response to the councillor from Bonnashur Valley. We have had the OPP out there. This is a regular community road to access anyone from that portion of Lower Amisom Bromley, Renfrew, to access Highway 17 quickly. The OPP have done what they said they can in terms of their maximum, besides putting a car out there every morning. And we have had, I wouldn't say tremendous success with our own radar. It works until people stop looking at it. But that's the reason why they're mobile, that's the reason why you move them around. They're a friendly reminder. And that's all they do. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you. Member from Ampere.
Thank you, Warden. To our operations director, do we have any results of how many accidents have occurred at that that intersection? Thank you, Warden. And through you, excuse me, through you to County Council and councillor from Ampere. No, we have no direct accident reports from that area that I'm aware of.
Thank you. A member from McNapp Brayside and then North Agona.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I can offer a bit of perspective to the call from my colleague from Amisom Bromley. Recently, we met with the inspector for our zone, for the detachment. And there's a few issues driving concerns that we've heard numerous times across the whole township. At virtually every corner of the township, speeding's an issue, and the lack of enforcement. And when my last term, when I was on council, there was a lot more visits throughout the township by the OPP for purposes of catching speeders and showing a presence. And that seems to have changed. There's a couple of things driving that. One is that the detachment is understaffed somewhere on 75%. Other detachments in the area, apparently Killel, is only at 50. And one in Ottawa is only at 62%. So that's a situation that's not going to be rectified anytime soon, because obviously you can't just hire and train on the job. They've got to go through college and recruitment process. So the other thing, unique, not entirely unique to our township, is that, you know, they go out and issue speeding tickets, but the section on 417, which is a provincial highway, is considered McNapp Brayside for purposes of counting how many tickets are issued. And it's probably easier to catch speeders on the 417 or the 17 than it is on our roads. But, so we had a good discussion and looked for ways to try to get things scheduled so, and give them some traffic counts from our black hat so that they can, you know, find the best places to position their police. But the other thing that's driving the lack of enforcement resources is the increase in mental health and drug calls, which is situation that the whole province, country, world perhaps is dealing with. And again, that takes away from the available resources for enforcement. We're continuing to discuss with the OPP how we can increase enforcement in the neighborhoods. But with respect to photo radar, I think we have two or three community safety zones, and we just asked staff to look into, at least starting there. And if we can get a couple photo radar operations going in our community safety zones, we can put out a press release and say we've instituted photo radar. We don't have to tell everybody that it's just in the community safety zones for now. But those are some of the actions that we've been taking locally.
Thank you. And North Agona Wilderforce, please.
Thank you, Chair. And yeah, just to echo what my colleagues have said, enforcement seems to be the real challenge. And I do recognize the fact that in our local detachment area, yes, it is certainly a shortage of staff that contributes to the lack of visible enforcement. I do think that especially for speeding, that the photo radar and I do think that especially for speeding, that the photo radar and the ability to issue fines through the photo radar is one solution that I would think would be cost-effective and more efficient even for the police. We have tried, we've purchased some of our own radar speed warning signs, and on one of our roads, the sign got stolen. So there's also the challenge of when you're trying to do something, there's always somebody who can find a way to try and avoid those measures that we think are contributing to safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Oh, I'm sorry, a member from Greater Madawaska and then Whitewater.
Thank you, Warden. Through you, just looking at this study here, it says all the stats of, doesn't meet the stats, doesn't meet the stats. What other reasons are, what would be the negative impact of putting a four-way stop there? What is the negativity of that?
Mr. Perkins, please.
Yes, thank you, Warden, and through you to County Council. First of all, I'll draw your attention to page 91, that is the warrants that we use. If you look at the Ontario Traffic Manual, Book Eight, what they suggest is that stop signs not be used as a traffic calming device, because what ends up happening is drivers now don't pay attention to the stop sign, and then they actually go through a stop sign. So OTM does not recommend using a four-way or a multiple stop sign. Also on page 91, back to councillor Lynch's question, I do apologise, there has been no accidents in the last three years at that intersection, as identified on the warrant. So, and back to councillor Donahue's comment, so empirically, this is what we use. So every time any municipalities ask for anything in their local municipalities, this is how we decide if there's a four-way stop necessary or a multiple stop. And again, in this situation here, putting in stop signs as a traffic calming measure, it tends to change the behaviour of drivers to the fact that they start ignoring other things. So that's why the Ontario Traffic Manual doesn't warrant a stop sign in this situation.
Thank you. Supplementary?
Just a supplemental to that, through you, Warden. So I noticed that there was a key word that you said, "they do not recommend." So it's a recommendation, it's not a bylaw or a standard or a policy, it's a recommendation. And I find with recommendations that sometimes they can be altered by other circumstances. And I think if the fact is that, I noticed in some of the stats, I think it's from 2:00 PM to 3:00 PM, they actually meet the standards. And so it being a recommendation, I think that we need to understand that what is the safety issue in this, and the fact that it's a stop sign, it's not a traffic calming, it's a traffic stopping. Thank you.
Thank you. And the member from Whitewater.
Thanks, Warden. I'll just add that that intersection currently has two stop signs already. So coming off of the highway on Godfrey has a stop sign, and coming off Firehand Lane has a stop sign. The municipal, the lower tier municipal road, the extension of Haley out to Highway 17, we don't own the property at the intersection, so we couldn't install a lower tier stop sign there either. Thus, the request to put two additional stop signs at this intersection to make it an all-way stop. And again, maybe it's temporary, maybe once we have hardened shoulders or other funds can be put aside for proper traffic calming. This is the most expedient way that we can see to bring some level of safety to this small community. Thank you.
Thank you. So you've heard the report and the comments, and so with that, seeing no further comments, I'll call the vote. All those in favour? And opposed? One, two, sorry, one, two, three, four, and two on line five. So just one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So seven. So it's tied. Sorry, I just, so. Okay, the motion was defeated. And so with that, is there a motion coming forward then to instruct staff to revisit it, or to instruct to have a sign erected?
A point of order, Mr. Chair, if there were seven opposed, I'm curious how the motion was defeated. Nine opposed?
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, I, okay.
Yeah, we counted. And then online, it'd end up being nine. Okay, dude, okay. Sorry. Could you put your hand up if you're in favour? Seven, I'm sorry. And then if you're opposed, please. Eight, I'm sorry. There was eight, so it did get defeated. No, I'm just trying to figure where I made my mistake. Yes, a member from Horton. So I may have misspoke if you're going to make a motion.
No. Thank you. I would like to see this brought back to the Operations Committee to actually take a look at all the information and what the stats are, not just in the last three years, in the last probably, probably six, seven years, and see if there's anything that Operations Committee can recommend that is some way of resolving this issue.
Okay, I think we can bring it back to the new committee in January or February, and see if there's anything, maybe the focus on traffic calming, to see if there's anything on the county structures, the county road that we can assist with. Was that the direction you were hoping for?
Yes, if that's, I would make a motion to that effect.
Sorry, I'm just discussing with the warden. So in terms of a motion or otherwise, because there is no action item, we still have to reconsider it, I would suggest that we would have brought it back to committee for further consideration anyways. If it's just direction of staff, I mean, that's can or can't, but I would have said we have to solve this issue. So my direction of staff would have been to bring it back for further resolution anyways, but it's entirely up to you, Chair, whether you want to motion on it or not.
Okay, I think, a member from Killu Haggy Richards.
If we bring this, oh, thank you, Chair. If we bring this back to committee, is there something that's going to change in the report as opposed to, let's vote on, we voted on this now, it's been turned down, do we, let's take a step forward and put the stop sign in, if we wish?
Well, I think, you know, we'll take, the idea is we take it back to committee and have some discussion about, you know, having heard this conversation here, to see if there's anything else that can be offered. So I'm, and I would assume that the stop sign would be item number one in the committee's You know, that's just, I don't think there's any urgency, it's not as if we have to do it tomorrow. So if we can take it back through the committee, that gives staff a time to take a look at other means, if that's acceptable to everybody. Okay, I see a general nodding of heads, and I can count enough to get to nine on this one, so, thank you, I appreciate it. And so with that, we'll move to Health Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. To the council of the Corporation of the County of Renfrew, members of County Council, we, your Health Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. As information items, item number one are the long-term care resident statistics for Bonnershire Manor and Miramishy Lodge, and I would advise council, for the total numbers, it is the population at the end of the month, in addition to the vacant beds at the end of the month, that identify the full beds and the percentage thereof. Item number two, Mr. Chair, Ministry of Long, sorry, also a component of that was the waiting list, I was remiss in omitting that. Mr. Chair, you will note 886 in total, and the largest number by a long shot is the waiting list at Miramishy Lodge, and not far behind are the Grove Nursing Home in Ampere and Bonnershire Manor. Item number two is Ministry of Long-Term Care revised masking requirements, and like Jason, just when you think it has been ultimately put to the grave, there is, once again, COVID makes its presence known. I believe County Council all received yesterday the report the Medical Officer of Health provided to the Board of Health, that is showing a substantial increase in respiratory cases that are showing up across the County of Renfrew, not entirely due simply to COVID, though COVID is on the rise substantially, but also the annual return of flu and respiratory syncytial virus. Item number three, enormous commendation to Mr. Blackmore and all of his staff for, once again, achieving, for the first time in a joint initiative, the two long-term care homes of the County of Renfrew are both accredited with exemplary standing. Each of the homes, to council, had this distinction on their own. This is the first, whereas a combined long-term care department, we have achieved this outstanding result, and I do note that Mr. Blackmore has included appreciation of the warden, myself, and of the CAO, but of course, I have to attest to the fact that the heavy lifting is done entirely by the incredible staff that report up through Mr. Blackmore, and my commendations to all of those that have worked outstandingly, particularly in the challenge of the last three years, and have continued to demonstrate their compassion and care for our community, particularly our long-term care residents. Item number four is delegation, we received a Health Committee from Integrated Virtual Care, and once again, expressing enormous commendation to the Paddawawa Centennial Family Health Centre and team. We were, the delegation was comprised for Health Committee was Ms. Judy Hill, and along with Dr. Jonathan Fitzsimon, and they were recognised and awarded the Bright Lights, the 2023 Bright Lights Award in the category of using population-based approach to provide care to the community achievement in integrated virtual care, and certainly this is running parallel to VTAC, virtual triage and assessment, both of which, it needs to be underscored, I think at all times, that these are trailblazing initiatives to meet the needs, in particular in rural and remote Ontario, but these are definitely transportable to any community. And the distinction, if you will, for council's consideration is VTAC is on an episodic basis, though you will note further in the report, we have already identified a higher use population, and our particular, have a particular focus on those, whereas IVC is integrating virtual care into the family physician or the wraparound concept of healthcare. So they are parallel, but certainly moving at the same pace in recognising and addressing the needs in our community. Item number five is a Renfrew County Virtual Triage and Assessment Centre, as I noted, the, launched the focused paramedic health review, and these are the repeat users, visitors to VTAC, and it demonstrates, once again, the enormity of the challenge that VTAC is addressing, in particular in these populations. Item number six, improving community resilience and the emergency management application for funding, and I believe this was an initiative that grew out of the exercise that was conducted at Health Committee. The Health Committees are the owners of the emergency plan, if you will, as distinct from the Community Control Group or the CEMCs, that I'm sure everyone in the room is aware of, and we did have, as a tabletop exercise, if you will, very, very fortunate to have had councillor Nicholson from Whitewater gave a very comprehensive report on flooding and experiences, even the most recent flooding experience in 2023, and what the responses were, and ultimately, there is now a funding application available, and it is provided for council, it is for a sandbagging machine, and also towards an initial embrace of what I think is probably where our country should be moving, which is a civil defence almost force that can be called upon to respond when we find ourselves in desperate need in our community, and I think this is making those nascent first steps. Moving on then, Mr. Chair, to bylaws. Dedicated Offload Nurses Programme, Resolution Number H-CC-23-11-126, moved by myself, seconded by committee, that County Council authorised the warden and clerk to sign a memorandum of agreement with the Ministry of Health for $421,000 in one-time funding for the 2023/24 funding year to support the Dedicated Offload Nurses Programme, and of course, that is the provincial fiscal year, and the background is attached. Item eight, Offload Staffing Job Description and Memorandum of Agreement, Resolution Number H-CC-23-11-127, once again, moved by myself, seconded by committee, that County Council authorised the warden and clerk to sign a memorandum of agreement with the Pembroke Regional Hospital for advanced care paramedics to participate in the emergency department to facilitate early ambulance offload transfers of patients onto hospital stretchers, and once again, Mr. Chair, the background is attached. Moving along to item nine, Agreement on Influenza Vaccine Administration, Resolution Number H-CC-23-09-128, moved by myself, seconded by committee, that County Council authorised the warden and clerk to sign a memorandum of agreement with the Renfrew County and District Health Unit to contract the community paramedic programme to deliver assist with delivery of influenza and COVID-19 vaccinations for the term October 30th, 2023, to December 31st, 2023, and again, the background is attached. Item 10 is for leased space on the second floor of Miramishy Lodge, Resolution Number H-CC-23-11-130, moved by myself, seconded by committee, that County Council authorised the warden and clerk to sign a lease agreement between Miramishy Lodge and Ms. Brenda Kincaid, foot care service provider, for the occupancy of a leased space room within Miramishy Lodge, located at 725 Pembroke Street West, Pembroke, Ontario, at an annual amount of $4,764 for the period of January 1st, 2024, to December 31st, 2024, and again, the background is attached for council. All of which, Mr. Warden, is respectfully submitted by myself as chair, along with committee members Emo, Grills, Jan, Murphy, Nicholson, Weir, and Wilmer.
Thank you, Chair. And with that, to council, comments, questions, concerns on the report, item number one, and a member from Laurentian Hills, please.
Thank you, Warden, through you. Do we know, I believe that clients that are waiting to get into these homes Do we know—I believe that clients that are waiting to get into these homes are placed on a 4A or 4B list, with one of them being crisis. Do we know how many of these people are in a crisis situation?
Mr. Blackmore, please.
Thank you, through you, Chair, to Councilor Grills. Actually, that question did come up at the last health committee, and it's something we're looking into now to determine of that number, how many are in crisis, how many are in hospital, or what level have they had exactly, so that we may be able to assess who may require our long-term care paramedic services.
So—and I think the other thing is that many of these people would be taking up space in hospitals in their alternate level of care beds as well?
Through you, Chair, to Councilor Grills, yes, that's correct. And actually, it's one of the statistics included. It identifies the residents that are in either other long-term care homes or hospital.
Any further questions, comments? Seeing none on item number one, move to item number two. Item three. Item four. The member from Beaune Valley, please.
Thank you, Warden. Forgive me, I don't know if Ms. Dombrowski sent the presentation to all of county council or just health committee, but I think every member would probably benefit from seeing that slide deck. Thank you.
So yeah, the indication is it's been sent. Item number five, please. Item six. And the member from Patawawa, please.
Thank you, Chair, through you. Whoever came up with this idea should be applauded. As we know, climate change is here, and it's real, and we've had 100-year floods now every year for the—sorry, for the past three or four years, 2017, 2019, 2023. And I know I myself have filled hundreds, maybe thousands, of sandbags by hand to help residents. So I'm hoping this is successful and that we get this piece of equipment here in Renfrew County. The only complication is I see the municipalities all fighting over it if one of these floods should ever occur again. But thanks and good luck.
Thank you. And the member from Amos and Bromley.
Two, on council services, secondary or final comment, the intent is that this is a very, very efficient machine. Certainly, enormous commendation to all of those that have staffed the battle stations, if you will, with the ladders, one of the first innovations, the ladders and the pylons, which was the development of the abacus, I suppose, from counting on one's fingers and toes. This will now move us into perhaps the digital age. But the intent is that, where possible, that this be made available and that it not be exclusive to the county domain. And really, the impacts of the flooding while they were experienced across the county, they were within the lower-tier municipalities. And many of us, thankfully, were spared direct impact from that. So it is the intent that this be made available right across the County of Renfrew, and we can sort out how that is going to be administered, but the intent is there.
Thank you. Member from Beaune Valley, please.
And we would offer to store it at our new paramedic base in Eganville. Thank you.
Okay, so we now have two new bases? We now have two new bases, one from the county and one from Beaune Valley?
Mr. Warden, I think the line forms here.
Yeah. Thank you. So we'll have to have a conflict resolution model. So with that, we'll move to item seven, please. Item eight. Item nine. And item 10. Report as a whole? Can I have a mover, please?
Mr. Warden, you will. I just wish to take this opportunity to give thank you to the directors that report up through the health committee, Mr. Blackmore, and to Mr. Nolan. The role of the chair of the health committee is made to be a pretty simple task with the leadership of both of the directors that report through health committee. And to also extend my deepest appreciation to all of health committee for their engagement on every issue that has come in front of us over the course of the year, as we draw to a close the freshman year for this new term of council. With that, all of which is respectfully submitted, Mr. Chair, and moved.
Thank you. With that, having heard the report and the comments, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you very much, council. And next up is Development and Property. So the chair, please.
Thank you, Warden. And beginning on page 165, to the council of the Corporation of the County of Renfrew, members of county council, we, your Development and Property Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Beginning with information item number one, the request for proposal for engineering services for housing solutions. Just want to say that this is a proactive approach on county and staff's behalf whereby the site evaluations and analysis are conducted, site planning and design prepared, regulatory compliance ensured, and site plan approval from the local municipality. In order to have projects that are shovel-ready and ready to move forward, knowing how tight some of the timelines for grants and funding can be, this would certainly alleviate some of those pressures when those grants become available. Item number two is the Funders Forum, and thank you to the community of Horton that this event will be happening on November 30, 2023, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And it is free for any individuals who are interested in attending. Item number three is the Fourth Taste of the Valley Event, which was held in Cobden on October 14, 2023. And there were 135 vendors and attracted well over 5,000 visitors, of course, one of the biggest ones in the county. And the last event being planned is the Holiday Edition for December 16, 2023, at the Germania Club in Pembroke from 10 to 3 p.m. Item number four is the Invest Renfrew County Newsletter, and that was released on November the 8, 2023. Item number five is the Core Business Consultations and Services Report, which is attached, and the data there is available for your review. Item number six is the Lee Street New Build Progress Report. Once again, the information is attached, and hopefully, Director of Development and Property may want to give a personal update on the project. Item number seven is the Subdivision Activity, and attached is the information on the areas and the number of lots that are subject for approval. Item number eight is the County of Renfrew Online Hosted Web Mapping Application. Again, the information is attached for your review. Moving to resolutions, item number nine is the Official Plan Amendment, the Alternate Notice Provisions, Resolution Number DP-CC-23-11-129, moved by chair, seconded by committee. County council directs staff to undertake an official plan amendment to introduce alternative notice policies for Planning Act applications. And further, that a letter be sent under the warden's signature to the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing in support of the resolution from the Corporation of the Municipality of Wawa requesting the provincial government to make an amendment to the Legislation Act 2006 to include digital publications as an acceptable means of publication and notice requirements for provincial acts and regulations. Again, because of the demise of the printed media, the reason for the change is being requested, and the background is there. And moving to bylaws, item number 10 is the Ottawa Valley Business Hive Space Sharing Agreement, Resolution Number DP-CC-23-11-128, moved by chair, seconded by committee. That county council adopt a bylaw to enter into an agreement with the Corporation of the Town of Renfrew for office space for enterprise Renfrew County commencing on January the 1st, 2024, for a five-year period. And once again, the information is attached. All of which is respectfully submitted by myself as chair and committee members Bennett, Eamon, Lynch, McKenzie, Service, Watt, and Weir. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you. County council, questions, comments, concerns about the report? And we'll start with item number one. And the member from Whitewater, please.
Thank you, Warden. And it's just—I'm trying to tie some stuff together that we had before. I know we've agreed to hire an engineer in public works, but those aren't the same engineering services that Development Planning is talking about in this proposal for item number one?
Mr. Davis, please.
Thank you, Warden, and through you. So no, it's not the same services. So we're looking at a specialty service, like, for example, JP2G, where they have the full range of support staff looking at a site specific, while Mr. Perkins is looking at more building structures, which is a little different than what we're looking for. And maybe Mr. Perkins can add on to that.
Please.
Well, thank you, Chair, and through you. Yeah, that's correct, that our group does civil engineering works. So as you see, bridges, culverts, and roads. My assumption here is what Development and Property is looking for is an architect and also site designers. So it's a different discipline of engineering.
Thank you. And any other comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to item two. Member from Laurentian Hills, please.
Thank you, Warden. This is a great opportunity for information. Do you know if there will be an opportunity to join by Zoom, or whether this will be a taped session that could be looked at later?
Mr. Davis, please.
Excellent question, and through you, Warden. So I'll get that information back to you about whether it's available through digital services or not, and then we'll see if that's a solution for you.
Member from Whitewater?
Thank you, Warden. Just a feedback, I've received a phone call from one of our community organizations. They were wait-listed, so they already had 80 confirmed participants last week. And they are talking about having a second session in the new year. So I think it's very welcomed. I know from a community organization perspective, COVID has changed over most of the leadership in our community organizations, or a lot of the historical knowledge, and they're building back from zero. So the access to know how to construct an individual grant application, or how do you work with partners on that application, they see this as vital. So very much appreciated, an excellent initiative, and I would encourage more of a similar support.
And with that, we'll move to item number three, Taste of the Valley. Again, another successful year, but more specifically, the one in Cobden, which is always a large event. And there was no wind this year, so there wasn't an issue. Last year, there was a windstorm through, and there were tents and stuff flying all over the place. It was quite interesting. Number four is in Invest Renfrew County Newsletter. Number five, the stats on visits, and then also on starter company. Number six, Lee Street. Mr. Davis, do you have anything you want to add?
Sure, if I can, through you, Warden. I hope everyone has the opportunity to take a chance or take a ride down to the corner of Lee and Douglas to take a look at the structure that's being built there for our eight units, 12-bedroom complex, well underway. It's fully roofed. When I was there on site on Friday, the glass was going to be—the windows were going to be installed this week, so it should be totally enclosed by the end of this week. And then they can start working on the interior with the drywall and finishing off electrical work. So please look at the Zen City, please take a look at it, or down there physically, and take a look at it. It's all hands on deck on this situation. The timelines is still working with Braun Construction. We're still looking at an opening date, and I'm going to say around March 1, when the weather is better. So I'll leave it at that, Warden.
Okay, thank you. Item number seven. Member from Greater Matowaska, please.
Thank you, through you, Warden. In regards to item number seven, the three that are in Greater Matowaska is what I'm referring to at this time. I know we've been getting a lot of feedback from constituents on it, and I'm just wondering, do we know what a timeline? Do we have a timeline on when these will be approved or not approved? Because I noticed within Zen City, when I went into it, there were a lot of studies that they went through, and then right at the very end of the sentence, they said, however not completed yet. However not completed yet. So are we waiting for all the studies to be complete before we make a decision? I just want to clarify that for my constituents. Thanks.
Mr. Davis, please.
Through you, Warden. So I don't know the specifics, but the process is we will wait for all the studies before we make any decision. And then what we can do in the meantime, we can—I'll ask planning staff to reach back to you to make sure where we're at in the process, and hopefully, that can answer your questions.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item number eight. Member from Amos and Bromley, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. And I do note, the last line says that options are going to be presented at the budget. I just wanted to interject at this point that I would certainly demur on options three and four of having a diminished level of service with respect to this. I think the very first GIS was in my first term as a municipal councillor in the 2010-2014 period, and just from the sake of land planning and land division, this is an enormous resource. And I anticipate that it is likely has somewhat condensed applications, that there is this incredible utility to be able to provide detailed mapping at home. So I am intrigued certainly at option two, wherein we may give consideration to hosting this in-house, of course, cost being a consideration. And I do note that it is going to be coming forward to budget, but at this point, I am not so much intrigued at options three and four.
Okay, and thank you. And so with that, we'll move to item number nine. And item number 10. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Item number nine, a member from Whitewater, and then Amos and Bromley. Oh, McNabb Resort, sorry.
Thank you, Warden. I just wanted to clarify, any of the lower-tier municipalities that are still party to the same official plan are covered in this application?
Mr. Davis, please.
Through you, when you read the report, this is a direction to staff to create a policy for alternative notifications. So part of the process will be reaching out to local municipalities if they're part and parcel of our official plan, again, as part of the process. So it's not a direction to implement anything right now, but just to give staff direction to start the process to create a policy for alternative notification for Planning Act applications.
Sorry, supplementary?
Sorry, just to make sure, I'm speaking to the letter under the warden's signature that'll go asking to amend the Legislation Act. Is that right?
Yes.
Thank you, Warden, and through you. So in this resolution, there's two different items going on. They both deal with notifications or changes of notification, one through the Planning Act as part of the OPA, and one for the letter we received from Wawa looking for the alternative notification. So what we're looking for is supporting the letter we received, because we are feeling the same crunch when we're losing.
the same crunch when we're losing media, print media throughout Renfrew County. I don't want to say on a daily basis, but in the last number of years. So we want to be ready for if things do happen where we have zero media, we have this legislation in place. And then the other side, I'll repeat myself, I think, about the Planning Act process, where we want to create a policy moving forward to streamline the process.
Good, thank you. A supplementary?
Sorry, that's good. And I thank you, I understand now, Warden. The only other question I had is that there are other areas that I have been told that we need to also notify the public on, in written form, in paper. Would, if we're going to make an application to the province to change the legislation, would it just be for the Planning Act at this time? Or would it include other requirements where we have to make public notification via paper?
Mr. Davis?
Thank you again, through you. So in the letter, it's for all applications, so that's, that's why we're talking about legislative changes.
Thank you. Member from McNabb Brayside, and then Amos and Bromley, how did I know?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. So speaking to the Wawa motion, and just in terms of background, so we're, we're one of those communities that is no longer served by print media. When Metro Land pulled that division, so we passed a similar motion in, in support of that, because we have no other alternative. Looking at the county, there still are print media that covers most of the county. And I have one concern is that because the whole industry is struggling, I think they need our support in order to stay in business and provide the valuable service that they do, because we all know there's many, many people in this county that, that are not online or don't trust online as a news source, and are quite happy to get their news and information from print media that still exists here in Renfrew County. So I'm just wondering, this is a bit premature, because we, we would be looking at this perhaps at budget time, but if, in, down the road, hypothetically speaking, if, if we go all digital, what, if, what, what might be the cost difference between digital-only notifications? I, I, is it just on our own website? Is that what we're talking about? Or is there, is there really any cost involved with that? And do we have any idea what we spend currently on print media with, with all the various notices that we're required to do?
Mr. Davis, can you take a stab at that, please?
Yeah, for sure, through you, Warden. And so when they looked at this, this notification, we did a kind of a deep dive in what it costs the County of Renfrew for a planning-specific notification for a, say, official plan notification. And it costs the County of Renfrew to put notifications in the paper for an official plan, one of our documents we have to change and notify the public and part of the process, and it costs around three thousand eight hundred dollars. So there's an example of the cost we, we put in towards these notifications. So again, to look at the overall, look at the County of Renfrew for all the different notifications we do, like for forest tenders and things like that, and job ads, I, I don't know the number quite yet, but I can get, get some more information, give you kind of a high level of what the cost of County of Renfrew to use print media. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you. And supplementary?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for, Mr. Davis, for that information. I look forward to any more details. Just for clarification, that, that three thousand dollars, was that just for one particular notice?
Mr. Davis?
So my understanding through the official plan notification is through, not just one paper, it's through all the papers we have within Renfrew County, so the Eaglehead Leader, North Renfrew Times, et cetera, to have these print, print ads in place for multiple weeks moving forward. So as an example.
Three thousand, yeah. Yeah? So yes, we, it's safe to assume it's three thousand dollars per application.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. And member from Amos and Bromley, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. It's a fascinating conversation. I find myself, once again, very similar to the, the consideration of the lifting of all of the rail in the County of Renfrew, that it's probably not that long ago that it would have been inconceivable that we would be finding our place. It is, Gutenberg is still celebrated for what the Gutenberg Press did, and it made knowledge accessible, not some cold and lonely scribe in a tower via their calligraphy, I think perhaps your penmanship, Mr. Chair, may be akin to. That was inaccessible knowledge, and the Gutenberg Press made it accessible, and now it is disappearing as the train has disappeared from our communities, almost inconceivable. When I first graduated from post-secondary, with some, some associates that I went to school with, we opened a newspaper in the city of Napean. At that time, we actually tendered with others from a community newspaper perspective for the business of the notice. And that seems even precious in this moment, when we are seeing the decline and fall of an entire sector. It is a Faustian bargain that even our national press is confronted with now, as my colleague from McNabb Brayside is giving consideration to supporting the printed press. So too has the federal government done so, and regardless of whether one supports that or is opposed to that, they are, they speak with, I think, equal vehemence in favor or opposed to the very agencies that are meant to hold accountable. The fifth estate, if you will, are now being subsidized by either the first or second estate, depending on your definitions. So it is terribly unfortunate, but it is the, the reality that confronts us. I would suggest with a not inconsiderate number of, of notices, we, amongst the lower tier and perhaps amongst the upper tier as well, we define what notice is meant. But since this is driven by provincial statute as to what notice is, then it does behoove us to recognize that increasingly, we may be unable to be compliant with provincial legislation. And as I said, I would not have imagined twenty years ago that I would be confronted with this sort of decision, frankly.
Thank you. And very quickly, should have made note of the starter company, starter company, starter company numbers, my apologies. So there were, as you know, and this is for our viewers, the number of grants issued were seventeen for sixty thousand dollars. The value of the investment leveraged was a hundred and one thousand. So nine businesses started and, or sorry, six businesses started and four expanded, with a total of twenty-one jobs created. So congratulations to, to the businesses that were part of the starter company. So with that, would like to ask for a mover, please? Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, item number ten. My apologies. And we could ask for a mover now?
Thank you, Warden. And, and before I move, I just, again, want to thank Director Davis and his very incredible team of managers, Melissa Markwood in Economic Development, Bruce Howarth in Planning, Lacy Rose in Forestry, and Kevin Raddick in Property Management. It's been wonderful working with this team the, the past year. I've certainly learned a lot and have enjoyed my time in the role as Chair. So thank you to the team, and yes, I will move that the report as a whole be adopted.
Thank you, Council. You've heard the report, you've heard the observations and conversation. With that, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed, none? It's Carrie, thank you very much. Move the Finance and Admin, please.
Thank you, Warden. To the Council of the Corporation of the County of Renfrew, members of County Council, we, your Finance and Administration Committee wish to report and recommend as follows. Throughout October and into November, Strack Core was working on our service delivery review. I hope that all the chairs had a good opportunity to, and the SLT had a good opportunity to chat with the consultants. Number two is our, the new electronic agenda management system, and there's some background there. Number three is council remuneration as at September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Number four is the Treasurer's Report as at September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. As earlier mentioned, number five and six, number five is the Provincial Office Administration, the East Region Managers Meeting, and number six is the POA Part Three Prosecution Services Update. And as mentioned in my Roma report later on, I will have some additional information after our December Roma meeting. Number seven is Take Our Kids to Work Day, and I understand that was a very popular day here at the county. Number eight are our co-op placements. Under Resolutions, Resolution Number FAC C twenty-three eleven ninety-six, moved by the Chair, seconded by Committee, the County Council approved that the County of Renfrew supports the total contribution of four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars required for the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus Seven and Seven Plus Regional Housing Plan deliverables to March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, as presented by the Eastern Ontario Regional Network, to be shared equally amongst the thirteen-member municipalities, with thirty-six thousand being the county's share. And the background is there. Number ten, Town of Aramprire CIP, Resolution Number FAC C twenty-three dash eleven dash ninety-nine, moved, moved by myself as Chair, seconded by Committee, the County Council directs staff to review the information from the Town of Aramprire and provide a report to a future meeting of this committee detailing the projected impact on the County of Renfrew to participate in the tax assistance program for the Town of Aramprire. And the background is there. Under Bylaws, our renewal, renewal of services of benefits, Resolution Number FAC C twenty-three dash eleven dash one hundred, moved by the Chair, seconded by Committee, the County Council adopt a bylaw to enter into a service agreement renewal with Cowen Benefits Consulting for the period January first, two thousand twenty-four, to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, and further that, a bylaw to enter into the service agreement renewal with Manual Life Financial for the provisions of a benefits insurance program, Policy four seven zero four, for the period of January first, two thousand twenty-four, to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four be adopted. And the background is there. All of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and Committee members Bros, Doncaster, Dunne-Hugh, Emo, Jardini, Yon, and Mayville. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. To County Council, comments, questions, concerns about item number one? Item number two? Item three? Item four? Item five? Item number six? Item number seven? Item number eight? Welcome to the two co-op, two co-op, two co-op students. I don't know what's wrong with my, I seem to be adding extra letters in today. I was checking, I don't seem to be having a stroke or anything, so anyway. Yeah, that's the good news. Congratulations to two co-op students that are, have joined us at Miramshi Lodge, who are grateful for their, their efforts to serve that community, and as we know, it is a community. And number nine, item number nine? Item number ten? Oh, I'm, my apologies. Member from Whitewater? Warden, I can defer. I, I noticed Aramprire put their hand up. Maybe Aramprire wants to go first. Oh, I'm sorry. Town of Aramprire, please.
Thank you, Warden. Yes, it is for number ten. Just a short comment, four point four years after this is done, the debt that we incurred would have been paid off. It's like an investment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then, member from Whitewater, please.
Just a question from process perspective. I noticed that it's, we only deal with community improvement plan investments such as this at the request of a lower tier? Or is this going to establish how we might do with it with something similar from any lower tier?
Mr. Kelly?
Through you, Warden. The answer is, is basically yes to both. This is the first time we've ever been petitioned to consider this type of request, but I would suggest to you that this will set us up for how it will be dealt with in other municipalities moving forward.
Thank you. And is there any other? The Town of Petawawa, please, the member?
Thank you, Chair, through you. It seems like a, a program that has many merits. I'm just wondering if the county were to get involved in something like this, I noticed that this one has a ten-year lifespan, and what happens, say, five years into the program, that the developer decides to pull the pin? Is there some kind of safety catch where the county would be, you know, the money that we didn't collect, that would be made up somehow?
Mr. Kelly?
Perhaps, Chair, I can defer to our acting treasurer, who's done some amount, some bit of work on it, before Daniel thought he was going to get away with it today, if you don't mind.
Certainly. Mr. Burke, please.
Thank you, Warden, and good afternoon, County Council. It's my understanding that this is, the province has a similar provision for brownfields development, and it has numerous rules, not all of which I can recall at the moment, but I'm sure that there is some safeguards in place in there, and we will review those and probably mirror the provincial rules at the county level.
And thank you. And the member from Bonchar Valley?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And just to respond to my colleague from Petawawa, because you, you probably have a local CIP, but this is a true, this could be a true policy change at the County of Renfrew level, which is why Committee decided to ask for more information and bring it back in the new year.
Thank you. And we'll move on to item number eleven. Seeing no further questions, a mover, please?
So moved, Mr. Warden, and I would also like to thank, although apparently he's departed now, I would still like to thank, wasn't that right, Councillor Grills? He'll realize what he did later. Um, yeah, I just want to thank the entire department, including Daniel and Amanda and Greg, and everybody's just been amazing, and thank you so much to the Finance and Admin Committee. It's been a great year. I can't believe our freshman year is over. It's incredible. And see, yeah, Gwen. But onward and upward to a great two thousand twenty-four. Thank you, Mr. Warden. It is moved.
Thank you. So you've heard the comments and questions and the report. I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed, none? It's Carrie, thank you, Council. And with your indulgence, could I get a motion to move closed, and it'll become the new, the new eighteen? The idea is that we can, rather than have staff come back in and out as soon as we're done closed, they can leave, if that's okay? So a motion, please? Motion from Amos and Bromley, seconded by Aramprire, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, none? It's Carrie, thank you. So right now, bylaws, a motion? Thank you. So a motion that the bylaws listed on item thirteen and heretofore, heretofore Schedule A on the County Council Agenda dated November twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-three, be deemed read three times and passed. A mover, please? Councillor from Headclere Mariah, seconded by Councillor from, or member from Killu Hegde Richards. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, none? It's Carrie, thank you very much. No, I should keep that, I guess, confirm to your bylaw. Good, thank you. And we'll move to written reports. And with that, I have nothing to report. I had a meeting on Friday, and I just haven't had time to prepare the report. Chalk River Stewardship Council?
Warden, no report.
Thank you. Eastern Ontario Regional Network?
I'm sorry, Mr. Warden, our meeting was yesterday afternoon.
Okay, thank you. Federation of Canadian Municipalities?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I don't have a written report, but I would, I was, I just wanted to update Council. FCM met in Ottawa last week, and over the course of three days, members of committees and the board met with over a hundred MPs on the Hill. in the board met with over a hundred MPs on the Hill, putting forward a number of things. What I would like to do is, so in the middle of that, obviously, the federal government released their fall economic statement, and President Pierce has asked me to convey this message, and if you'll indulge me, I'll read it if you don't mind. So, "Housing affordability is a top priority for Canadian municipalities. Today's fall economic statement takes some steps to improve housing affordability by increasing federal financing for new rental housing construction, increase federal grants for affordable housing by one billion dollars over three years, increasing funding for co-op housing development, and supporting municipalities in regulating short-term vacation rentals. While F C M acknowledges the federal investment to support new housing construction announced today, the reality is that we cannot rapidly scale up new housing construction without also investing in municipal infrastructure that supports it. In May two thousand and twenty-three, the federal government made a commitment to deliver on landmark investment in infrastructure across this country. We are concerned that the fall economic statement does not reflect the scale of infrastructure investment required to meet the national housing supply gap, and F C M will be looking to budget two thousand and twenty-four for a comprehensive, ambitious investment in community infrastructure that matches the record-breaking population growth that is currently underway in Canada. With winter approaching, we are all calling for urgent action on the homelessness crisis that is impacting communities across this country. The challenge of investing significantly in infrastructure to support ambitious new levels of housing will deeply influence the quality of life of all Canadians in their communities for decades to come, and form the core of F C M's detailed recommendations and that was submitted to the Standing Committee on Finance. In last year alone, Canada's population increased by more than one point one million. With every home built, there's a corresponding infrastructure need that must be met. New housing depends on municipal infrastructure, from water to roads to wastewater facilities, to community amenities, to public transit facilities. This is what makes a difference between laying bricks and mortar and ensuring vibrant, successful communities into the future. That is why F C M has constantly called on the federal government to make targeted investments in the Canada Community Building Fund to help boost local infrastructure. This is why Canada is leading a national call for a new municipal growth framework, a new revenue tool or set of revenue tools that are tied to Canada's growth and redefines how we work across all levels of government. As our nation grows, the need for municipalities to confidently meet that growth is clearer than ever. Municipalities are on the front line of challenges related to homelessness, mental health, climate change, and more. As budget two thousand and twenty-four approaches, we will, as the order of government of proximity, continue to engage the federal counterparts, putting forward detailed, future-focused recommendations that will empower Canadians by empowering communities. So, and just to follow up on that, so the... Two of the key things that we spoke with those one hundred MPs over the three days were, we're ready to support housing construction, but it's not that simple. It's the housing... We can get those done, but municipalities don't have the infrastructure behind it to support those housing. So we're calling on that. So primarily through the Canada Community Building Fund, the proposed... The proposal to the federal government is doubling it and indexing it at three point five percent. And there's also... We're also asking for a dedicated rural wastewater... Water and wastewater... Rural Water and Wastewater Fund, at a tune of, I believe it was a billion dollars over ten years. So, just as an update for people. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, Roma, please.
Thank you, Warden. I'm really glad a whole bunch of us are stumbling over our words today. I don't know what's wrong in this room. As you can read, a lot of our... Who's making fun of me now? A lot of our board meeting was obviously spent on the upcoming Roma Conference, so it is a short report, but it was a long meeting. Thursday, we continued to work on our strat plan. We focused on Roma's mission and mission statement and values, and I guess our last strat plan meeting is coming up next week, so I'm really excited about that. On the Friday, we had a board meeting, we had a cross-provence check-in. Items of interest were illegal land use, homelessness, the need for more mental health resources, regional waste management, O P P staffing challenges, cybersecurity, and water and wastewater costs. I'm really excited about the conference again. Please, if you can be there on the Saturday or first thing Sunday morning. We are having zone meetings at this time. I believe Zone Six is still slotted for eleven-thirty, but I will get you on the Sunday, but I will get you the location within the Sheridan Center or the Sheridan Hotel. Our policy update from EMO included a report on the voluntary amalgamations of public health units, the two-hundred-million-dollar grant opportunity for water and wastewater, and the P O A shortfalls in J P's and fine collections. And as I mentioned in my F and A report, it was of such interest, the EMO policy advisor for the court system, that there wasn't enough time to get in all her questions, so we've asked her to come back next Friday, and I believe, Warden, we have her booked for an hour to an hour and a half, because apparently Renfrew County are not the only people in this pickle, and other people have brought it up, so I'm very much looking forward to that delegation. Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'll take questions if there are any.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much for your reports. Notice of motions? Seeing none. Members' written motions? Member from Petawawa, please.
Thank you, Chair. Through you, I'd like to formally withdraw my motion to rescind.
Okay, thank you very much. And with that, we would... I would take a motion to move into closed to...
Do you want to do new business first?
Oh, I'm sorry. We'll do new business first. And Laurentian Hills, please.
So as being the first person to report, I was remiss in thanking the Community Services Committee and the Renfrew County Housing Corporation for their support over my first year as being Chair. In particular, Margot, Jennifer, Andrea, Jason, Mike, and Kevin, and all the members of the committee for their support and participation, and especially you, Laura, for your wonderful guidance and help, and I wish you all the best in your retirement. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So maybe we'll take a five-minute bio break. I seem to have had that impression. So we'll come back at two-twenty, if that's okay, or two-twenty... Two-twenty-five? Thank you.
So if I could have a motion for closed please. Pursuit to section 239 of the municipal act 2001 is amended for the purpose of personnel matters about an identifiable individual including municipal or local board employees. Cao slash clerk performance appraisal mover please. Member from Amsteb Bromley second by member from Greater Madawaska. You heard the motion discussion? All those in favor? Opposed none it's carried thank you.
Thank you. We're back in open. Thank you very much for your patience. We have nothing to report from our closed meeting at this point. And with that, I would accept a motion for confirmatory bylaw. That bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council of the county of Aranpour at the meeting held on November 29, 2023 be now numbered, deemed to read three times and passed, bylaw number 14923. Move her please. Laurentian Valley and Town of Petawawa. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None is carried. Thank you very much. And with that, motion to adjourn please. Town chief of Bullinshire Valley seconded by Town of Aranpour. Discussion? I see Neil's just pouncing. All of those in favor? Opposed? None is carried. Thank you very much everyone. And thank you to staff for some excellent reports. And to our wardens service or community service winners, we're very grateful to them as well.